Deputy Chief Bonjorno, can you test your mic, see if you can hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Joe, can you try that again?
Hello, hello, test one, two, three, four.
Thank you so much to hear you. Great.
Counsel, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we come out of executive session.
A motion second to come out of executive session, all those favor seats by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Councilman Burr. I have a motion second to adjourn, all in favor, signed by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. We are adjourned. We'll just take three seconds to get logged into our system and then we'll start at 6:10.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
We're adjourned, but I was, the computer was informing me I had updates that were gonna be, we're gonna take a significant amount of time, but it went fairly quick.
Counsel, we will call the meeting to order for the record. It is June 1st, 2021, at 6:12 PM. We will begin this evening's meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilwoman Strater, Councilman Huglan. I apologize, Councilman Burr, Mayor Simison.
Yeah. Next time, it's a pledge of allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Our next item is the community invocation, which will be given tonight by Vinnie Hanky with the Value Life Community Church. If you'd all please join us in the community invocation or take this a moment of silence and reflection.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you again for the invitation to be with you all. Pray for you.
Thank you.
God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the privilege and freedoms to gather together to lead in the community. I pray for each member of the city council, God, that you might grant them wisdom to lead as servants and to seek the greater good of the community that they lead. I pray for their constituents, God, that they would honor them with respect. I pray for the community members' side as they speak. I would just give them a spirit of fellowship as we seek to be a city that loves our neighbors as ourselves. We pray for the first responders, the teachers and the healthcare workers, God, who continue to serve our community. We ask all of this through Christ's name. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bless you, guys.
Next item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
We adopt the agenda as published.
I have a motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next time is consent agenda. Councilman Burr.
Changes to the consent agenda as well, so I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign it for the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion second to prove the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so, Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we have one sign up, Sally Reynolds.
If you'd like to come forward for three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council, Sally Reynolds residing at 1166 West Bacall Street in Meridian, Idaho. So recently, I reviewed a petition for judicial review summary handed down by Judge Norton in favor of the city of Meridian. And I remembered a topic I wanted to bring before city council for discussions later date. You may end up addressing it internally or at a work meeting or not at all, but I'd like to state it on the record for information for the public. My request is that the direction for public hearings state that if you are representing a group of people and are given 10 minutes, that you retain your three minutes as an individual citizen to address concerns with your own personal property. Here's the reason for the request. In the judgment, the question of standing was addressed. Basically, and this is quoting directly from the judgment, "Lupa only allows an effective person to find as a person with a bona fide interest in a real property, which may be adversely affected by a man's decision to challenge the decision. In order to satisfy the requirement of standing, the petitioners must allege or demonstrate an injury in fact and substantial likelihood that the judicial release requested will prevent or redress the claimed injury. The petitioners must establish a peculiar or personal injury that is different than that suffered by any member of the public. Proximity is an important factor of standing in a court, is more likely to find standing where the landowner property is adjoining the proposed development or adjacent to a close quote. Two of us, Mr. Eastman and myself, live on adjacent land. But Mr. Eastman's standing failed based on the fact that he only addressed traffic concerns in his testimony. We did not realize each person had to speak to each alleged harm, so he was raising traffic concerns for everyone. While I did offer ample testimony about how noise, lights and odor would affect neighbors from adjoining development, I was always speaking on behalf of the larger group and never directly personally cited my own property. The judgment reads, while Reynolds raised general concerns with the neighboring commercial development that was actually approved, she presented no evidence during side to testimony that her residence was directly impacted by noise, odor or lights from the development approved by the city council. Reynolds failed to show that the location of her property exposed her residents to a particularized harm from the light's orders or sounds of the approved development. As a side note, I would like to state that over the past year, I have been sleeping with noise cancelling headphones. There is a light that shines directly into my bedroom window throughout the night. And I have, as of recently, two weeks called non-emergency dispatch regarding illegal activity going on at the property. I don't say this to complain. I say it to show that reality and what a judge says is reality can be completely different. Three years ago, I know that if I had asked the prior mayor and prior city council to grant me an extra three minutes to address my personal property, I would have been denied. Now, the more educated part of me wishes that I had requested that because if I had been denied, I could have filed the petition on that basis that my due process rights were violated to protect my own personal property. But you live and learn from your mistakes and I hope that someone can learn from mine. I would advise any member.
You can finish your comment.
Okay, thank you. I would advise any member of the public, speaking on behalf of their group, request that their own three minutes be retained so they can illustrate how their own personal property will be impacted by a future development. I also urge residents who are close to a development to address every issue that will affect their property. If the city of Meridian is serious about allowing residents the opportunity to address their personal property rights, I request that that clarifying verbiage of citizens' rights be added to public hearing instructions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take that under advisement. Counsel, just a moment of personal privilege, at least from my perspective, I have not been asking, when people say they're there to testify on the HOA, asking others to raise their hand to showcase that I'm allowing everyone the opportunity to provide testimony in this format, that the HOA represent does not preclude your right to provide testimony. That's how I've been handling these, just moving forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
Is it appropriate just to make a comment or is that?
Would you like to point out personal privilege?
Yes. Please, Mr. Mayor, personal privilege. I just think that what Ms. Reynolds said is incredibly important. And I think that, I think that as a body, we'll take that under advisement. I think that Mr. Mayor has already been handling that, but I think that we probably need to reach out to planning and zoning so that they are under the same guidelines as.
We can do that, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, anything, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, that was all.
Okay, then we will move into our action items for this evening. First up is a public hearing contained from May 18th, 2021, for shape review terrace H 2020-0117. I will ask staff if they have any comments that they'd like to make as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This project was continued in order for staff and the applicant to work with ITD on the northbound right turn lane on South Meridian Road, State Highway 69, onto East Quartz Creek Street. An immediate versus long-term needs for that. The applicant did offer to construct a right turn lane with development of this site at the last hearing. And they did submit a concept drawing of the turn lane, which has been conceptually approved by ITD. Therefore, staff is recommending a development agreement provision is added that requires the developer to construct a northbound right turn lane on South Meridian Road, State Highway 69, onto East Quartz Creek Street with the first development phase in accord with ITD standards. And just to remind you, there are three requests for waivers that are associated with this application. They are highlighted in your hearing outline tonight. Would you like me to go through those or is that sufficient for you?
Counsel, would you like anything further than staff at this time? Sounds like we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, I see the applicant is with us. Mr. Brecken, would you like to make any comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, yes, if I could, I'd like to just pull up the sketch that we prepared that depicts the right-hand turn lane. So here's the sketch, and we sent this to ITD. Meridian Road North is facing to the right-hand side of the page. Here's East Quartz Creek Street and the Bernie lateral on the south side. And right-hand turn lane is depicted in the blue color that would tie in to existing improvements and also proposed improvements on the south side of East Quartz Creek Street. The green strip depicts what we expect to be additional right-of-way dedication and dimensions here that depict what would show the taper as well as decelerating to allow for right-hand turn. The improvements along the edge here are the same as were previously shown. And I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brecken. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
And it just, it looks like all of the existing plan was just compressed 12 feet. Everything shifted east. Lots are the ones that absorbed the 12-foot shift to accommodate the lane. Is that your summary?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, that's correct. The right-hand turn lane was added along with shoulder and then everything was shifted over accordingly to allow for the, for the turn lane.
Councilman Borton.
Is it, is it contemplated to staff's comment about the installation of this that it would be complete and approved by ITD prior to, for example, the first CO or first permit? When would this need to be completed? How would we condition that in the DA?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, I guess I presume that this right-hand turn lane would be conditioned as part of the first phase of the construction of the proposed development. So this would be included in the construction documents and we would work with ITD to refine this as need be. But it would need to go in right away, our first phase.
Counsel, any additional questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
If there's anybody in the audience that would like to provide testimony on this item, if you'd like to come forward to the podium at this time and do so, or if there's anybody online that would like to provide testimony, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom platform. Seeing nobody. So, Brecken, would you like to make any final comments?
Mr. Mayor, no, I stand for questions. I believe we've talked through all the items. If there are anything, any other questions, I would be glad to address them. talked through all the items. If there are anything, any other questions, I would be glad to address them.
Thank you. Councilboard.
Either for Sonia or legal, to that question I had asked about the trigger point for completion of this northbound right hand turn lane, that it would be installed, completed prior to blank, thinking of construction traffic, even though it might not be a lot of northbound. So there's some clear metric of when it has to be done.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess from a tracking standpoint, I mean, it's either for the city, it's either based on building permits, like or before first occupancy. So there's got to be some significant point that would make sense. You know, ITD, as they say in the updated staff report, don't have a timetable on when that road widening may occur. It could be five years from now, it could be 10 years from now. So if the desire of the council is that there be a right hand turn lane, D cell lane installed, it really is whether you want it on the the first building permit to be issued or the last CO to be issued. And I think that's the best way for us to track it, I would think, unless Sonia has a different perspective. Pardon me? Right, so. Yeah. Yeah, so first CO, or so Sonia was saying so silently, the first, either the first building permit or the first CO, that that's the trigger point that they can keep track of, that can be managed. The other question is then the is this turn lane for the part north of the canal and not the four houses south of the canal? Is that right? So I don't know what the sequence of construction is intended. So I don't know if, again, if it's the first building permit or first CO of the buildings north of the canal.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
House one.
From the prior conversation and appreciate the applicant getting back with ITD and being willing to add a safety feature like this, and ITD was willing to accommodate it and understanding it's a little compressed. And everyone seemed to cooperate to try and account for some added safety. If there wasn't an objection to having it installed prior to the first building permit, I mean, it airs on the side of safety to the extent there may be some construction traffic at the start that it being a little bit earlier. If that metric is acceptable, the first building permit, then it's measurable and errors on the side of safety.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with Mr. Counsel, what's your desire this time? Would you like to close the public hearing, leave it open? House one.
Just to kind of close a loop on the waiver conditions that staff had alluded to. The three that are in the report, it didn't sound like from the prior discussions that staff had any any overwhelming concern with them in light of the site. Some of the site constraints that you've referenced seem to justify the requests here.
Yes, I got it. I got it. Give me a second. Mr. Mayor, Councilboard, yeah, staff has no major concerns with that. If council should wish to approve that, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
I guess my only question on the conditions for Sonia was just for the waiver to allow the McBurney lateral to remain open. If we feel like we have adequate fencing to preserve public safety.
Got a question to staff?
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, they have, I believe it's wrought iron fencing along there. The applicant would confirm.
Yes, that's correct. Wrought iron fence.
Oh, yes, that's.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
House one.
Not any discussion. I'm going to go ahead and close or make a motion to close the public hearing on item 12, H 2020-0117.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
House one.
This application, which we saw earlier, it makes good sense. The zoning and plat itself makes particular sense at this location. The added turn lane really was one of the primary concerns that has now been addressed, so. I'm going to make a motion that we approve H 2020-0117 as presented in the staff report of June 1, 2021, to include the DA provision that requires the right hand northbound turn lane on Highway 69 to be completed prior to the first building permit. And to approve the waiver of UDC 11-6C-3F to allow block three to exceed 1,200 feet due to the existing site constraints as requested and set in the staff report. To approve the waiver of UDC 11-3A-6B, allowing the McBurney lateral to remain open and not piped. It will be fenced, as previously discussed. And to approve the waiver of UDC 11-3A-3, addressing the access points to collector streets as set forth in the staff report.
Mayor, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion a second. Is there any discussion? Before we vote, I just want to at least give my thanks to the applicant for bringing this needed safety improvement to the road. And I know they're not fun, but they're needed, especially as we are developing along state highways, which have even less tools to actually see improvements done in a timely fashion than ACHD. So thank you for that. So with that, Cork, call it all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Strater.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much. Best of luck on your project.
Thank you.
Next item up is a public hearing for H 2021-0014. I'm going to open this public hearing with staff comments. I was not going to try that word right now.
Alrighty, just one sec here. Alrighty, the next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning in a preliminary plat. This site consists of 19.26 acres of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County and is located at 1690 West Overland Road at the northwest corner of Overland and Linder Roads. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is mixed employment, which is the 13.4 acres shown in gray there on the center map. And mixed use commercial, which is the brown 5.9 acres in the 10 mile interchange specific area plan. Annexation and zoning of 25.67 acres of land with a CG general retail and service commercial zoning district consistent with the associated future land use map designations. The proposed use will include sales and service for commercial fleet operations for large commercial trucks and motorhomes, vehicle accessory sales and installation facility for customizing vehicles, parts develop, excuse me, parts department, and reconditioning facility for used cars for Kendall Ford Auto Center. The applicant anticipates the future uses in the six lots located along West Overland Road and adjacent to South Spanish Sun Way to be retail and office space. As a provision of annexation, staff recommends a development agreement is required to ensure future development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the 10 mile interchange specific area plan. Because a conceptual development plan was not submitted for the commercial and office uses on the southern portion of the property, staff is recommending the agreement is modified prior to development of that area to include a concept plan that is consistent with the comp plan. A preliminary plat is proposed, consisting of nine commercial buildable lots on 19.26 acres of land in the proposed CG zoning district. Lots range in size from 0.51 of an acre to 9.7 acres with an average lot size of 2.01 acres. The plat is proposed to develop in one phase. One public street access, South Spanish Sun Way is proposed by a West Overland Road and one stub strat, stump, excuse me, stub street, West Tossa Street is proposed to be at the west boundary for future extension in accord with the transportation system map in the 10 mile plan. Linda Road is scheduled in the five year work plan to be constructed as a new four lane I-84 overpass and widen to five lanes on each side of I-84 with a level three bike facility from Franklin Road to Overland Road in the future. The Overland Linda Road intersection is listed in the CIP to be widened and signalized between 2036 and 2040. A 10 foot wide detached multi-use pathway is proposed as required within the street buffer along South Linda Road in accord with the pathways master plan. Detached sidewalks are required along all streets with street trees. The hardened drain crosses the northeast corner of this site and is proposed to be piped. And this is just a copy of the ACHD preliminary lines map. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the Kendall Ford site as shown. Two single story structures are proposed on Lot 1, Block 1, with building materials consisting of ACM panels, which are aluminum composite, corrugated horizontal metal panels, CMU in two different colors. Metal sunscreens and canopies are proposed over some windows. Overhead doors are proposed on the north, east and west sides of the building. Final design must comply with the design standards in the 10 mile plan and the design standards in the architectural standards manual. The commission did recommend approval of these applications. Becky McKay Engineering Solutions, the applicant's representative testified in favor and also submitted written testimony in agreement with the staff report. No one testified in opposition or commented on the application. Key issue of a discussion by the commission, they were in favor of the location of the proposed use and the site design. There were no changes to the staff recommendation by the commission and no outstanding issues for counsel. And there has been no written testimony received since the commission hearing. That will stand for any questions. The applicant is present in chambers to testify.
Thank you, Sonia. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Sonia, is there right of way dedication with this different than what would normally be if it's just the expansion of the road, meaning more right of way to account for overpass spacing?
I am not sure without looking at the report. It's covered in the ACHD report.
At some point, I presume we would have covered that and tried to address to make sure that there's going to be a future overpass that would right of way necessary for it.
ACHD is planning for that, so it's covered in their report.
Counsel, any further questions at this time? Okay, I want the applicant to please come forward. You can say your name and address for the record and be recognized for 15 minutes.
My name is Sherry Styles. I'm with Engineering Solutions, 1029 North Rosario Street in Meridian. Thank you, Mayor Simison and council members. I'm here tonight representing Idaho Auto Mall LLC on this annexation and zoning and preliminary plat application. I won't repeat what Sonia has very adequately covered in her staff report. I'll just add a couple of things. Just one note, there will be no vehicle sales or major auto body repair at this location. It will be strictly for the servicing and those other uses reconditioning cars and the fleet operations accessories, that kind of thing. Just so you know, that is not going to be a sales. Idaho Auto Mall and Kendall Ford chose this particular location because of its proximity to the 10 mile interchange. That was a big draw. Visibility from the freeway. And another big draw was that they were located right just west of Camping World, which uses the Ford chassis and on a lot of their motor homes that that if they want accessories added or need those warranty workers services done, Kendall Ford would be there available to do that work. They're going to be consolidating all of these like services into this one location. They have multiple locations throughout the area that perform these types of services, but they wanted one central location that they could do that. Right now they have moved their company's headquarters. They're into Meridian. They purchased a lot in a building off Opera Point Way in Silverstone subdivision. And all of their their corporate headquarters is now the city of Meridian. They were hoping to get it all at the same location, but some of the design constraints and the timelines didn't mesh, so so they're glad to be able to locate that still here as well. Just one note on Sonia's report, the hardened drain has now been piped. We went through Nampa Meridian Irrigation District and obtained a license agreement with them and wanted to beat the irrigation season, so that drain has been completely piped. And as well, the irrigation pipe to the property to the west has been completely piped and approved by the adjacent neighbor there. It's on the rural agricultural property right now. We've had careful attention given to the architectural design of this center. The architect, Adam Garcia, was working diligently with the staff and the design guidelines for the 10 mile specific area plan to make sure the architect meets those guidelines. Initially, they had one building and then they broke it into seemingly two buildings and re-orye ended the building, so the mess from the interchange wouldn't wouldn't seem so great. And we're really excited about this facility and it's over 90,000 square feet. Infrastructure and building costs initially will be $20 million. They're just excited to add to Meridian and the neighborhood. We had two neighbors here at the neighborhood meetings. They were both in support of the project. We have asked for building permits to be allowed prior to actual recreation of the plat due to the size of the facility and the length of the time it will be to do the site prep work and and get the initial facility. The other lots will come as they get users for those lots and more specific concept for each of those areas. In summary, we're in agreement with all the staffs and agency recommendations. Oh, and one more thing, I forgot to answer your question. Councilman Borden, we are dedicating 60 feet from center line on Overland Road for this property. That's basically an expressway width. It is the widest width we have ever been requested of ACHD on a roadway within the city limits of Meridian. So there has been ample right of way dedicated for that. With that, we are really excited to expand Kendall Ford's positive contributions to the city of Meridian. Will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sherry. Counsel, any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. So Cork, do we have any sign up on this item?
Mr. Mayor, only the applicant signed up.
Okay, if there's anybody in the audience would like to come up and provide testimony in this. Okay, if there's anybody in the audience would like to come up and provide testimony on this item, please do so at this time. Or if you're one of our attendees online, you'd like to provide testimony, please use the raise your hand feature on the Zoom platform. Seeing no one coming forward or raising their hand with the applicant, like any final comments? Shay, would you like any final comments since someone is providing testimony? Okay. Councilman Borton.
Normally allow issuance of a permit prior to recordation of the final plat, any concern in this one?
Mr. Members of the council, I guess without talking to the building department, I mean, you're right, normally we wouldn't do that because again, there's some other issues. But if the council wants to direct that that you're okay with that, if it meets the building officials metric of whatever they feel the most comfortable with, I think that would be okay. I again, I don't know whether either Mr. Freckleton or Mrs. Orca have some specific things that they require before they do that, so.
Councilman Borton.
Framing that well, I don't know if the applicant has thumbs up or concern or question with that. Those sideboards look like maybe you did.
Sherry Styles, Engineering Solutions. You're asking about the building permit. We we would like to get the it's eligible for one permit right now. It's a legal parcel. It hasn't been divided. So similar to other commercial projects within the city, I know have been granted building permits prior to actually recording the final plat. But realizing, you know, we've got to have all the fire safety and, you know, meet all the conditions for 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 public safety issues, you know, any signage that needs to be put in. But they're really anxious to get started. It's been a long process, not with you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I think we're all saying the same thing. So if 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 we were to approve it with those sideboards that are building, you know, subject to approval by our building department, it's exactly what you're saying, but it still gives us the comfort that nothing gets missed. Okay, no worries.
Thank you. Councilman Borton.
No discussion, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing on H twenty twenty one zero zero one four.
Second the motion.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, yes, have it. Councilman Borton.
Love seeing Kendall Ford grow and continue to invest and make Meridian home, so that is greatly appreciated. Sure, and this this application at this location seems to be spot on. Think the so I'm going to make a motion that we approve page twenty twenty one zero zero one four as presented in the staff report of June one, twenty twenty one. And to allow the issuance of a building permit prior to recording the final plat, subject to the approval of our building department.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton, Cavanagh, Strater, Burnt.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Best of luck to Kendall moving forward. Okay, counsel, next up is a public hearing for Linder Village, age twenty twenty one dash zero zero three four. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next application is a request for a development agreement modification. This site is located at the southeast corner of North Linda Road and West Chindon Boulevard and is zone CC and R eight. The applicant proposes to amend the existing development agreement to update the use area plan to allow for a financial institution in the area currently designated for specialty retail and restaurant uses at the northwest corner of the site. No other changes to the uses shown on the plan are proposed. Substantial compliance with the approved use area plan is required as a provision of the development agreement to ensure a minimum of three land use types. Commercial, which includes retail restaurants, et cetera, office, residential civic, which includes public open space, parks, entertainment venues, et cetera, and industrial are provided within the development consistent with the guidelines in the comprehensive plan for the associated mixed use community future land use map designation for this site. The conceptual development plan and site circulation plan have also been updated to reflect the proposed reconfiguration of the site layout in the area where the financial institution is planned. Adjacent building footprint to the east now includes a drive through. The pedestrian circulation plan depicts reconfigured pathway locations consistent with the new site design. The proposed change to include financial along with the retail and restaurant uses will still ensure a mix of land uses are provided as desired in the mixed use community designation. Because the proposed change increases the types of uses planned for this area, which is desired, staff is supportive of the requested amendment to the development agreement. Staff is recommending approval of the requested modification. Written testimony has been received from Norman and Julie Davis. They are not in favor of the proposed change to the use area plan to include financial institutions. They prefer restaurant and specialty stores in this location since there are two other financial institutions within walking distance of this site. And lastly, a letter was received from Sally Reynolds. She is against a TCO, temporary certificate of occupancy being issued for Winco before the Chindon and Linda Road improvements are complete. As the development agreement requires all improvements required by ITD and ACHD associated with this development to be completed within the timeframe required by those agencies in accord with the STARS agreement and consistent with the traffic impact study prior to issuance of the first CBO within this development. And just to note that this issue is not the subject of this application. However, a TCO has already been issued by the building department to allow shelf stocking and setup of the store, which will expire on June fourteenth prior to the store opening. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions about that last comment. And I understand it's not the subject of this application, but it did come up. So if they wanted to actually open the store prior to the road improvements being completed, would that come back before City Council?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, council, it's it's not allowed currently by the development agreement. So those improvements would need to be complete prior to issuance of their certificate of occupancy. There there may be a temporary occupancy issued for like not, you know, the landscape buffer along the Linda Road and Chindon possibly, if they aren't able to get that done, that's something that we regularly do. But the the road improvements are required to be complete.
Got it. It's just a follow up. So there's a temporary CO that's been issued, but that's not sufficient for the store to actually open for business. So be clear.
Now, they're planning to open on the twenty first, I believe, of June. And it's set to expire on the fourteenth.
But it, sorry, but it's temporary. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I mean to step over you. But so it's temp, so it's a temporary CO, but the trigger for the store to actually open for business is a full CO and that has not been issued.
That's correct.
Thank you. That helps my understanding.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I am Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so maybe to follow up on Councilman Strater, since I don't want to mix it into the record of this. But since you've asked a question, I have been in contact with the building department, development services and and the economic development team on the process of the store opening. And so if the mayor would like, or the council would like us to kind of bring that forward next week to answer those questions like the roadway and the improvements, we could certainly do that. As we do know, there is has been some concern expressed out there about that. And we've been working really closely. There's a lot of timing that has to occur, also a lot of timing that is not necessarily the applicant's responsibility either. So we can have that conversation next Tuesday if you'd like, and that way it doesn't get mixed into this conversation about this specific item.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Yeah, I think if we need to have that conversation, we can. It sounds to me like if it's pretty simple to me, if they want to open for business and modify the DA before they've completed these improvements, staff just told me they have to come back before us. That's fine for me personally.
So let me make it clear, yes, to modify the DA. If it's compliant with the DA with what they're doing, then that's normally a staff level decision. I just didn't know if the council would want to know since you've had some public outreach about it.
Right? Counsel, any further questions for staff at this time? All right, ask the applicant to please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Mar CS HQ Architects, two hundred Broad Street in Boise. Thank you for having us and pleased to present you for this development modification request. I believe Sonia has covered the item well, and we are in agreement with the staff report. We do have representatives from ICCU and ICCU's architects as well as representative from the property developer.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Um, thank you. Did did you guys try to, you know, find other specialty retailers? How did that process look? Do you feel like the market doesn't like, give us a flavor for why this changed now?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this is as we developed the concept plan, this was a few years ago. As things changed, so is the tenant mix and stuff has changed as well. And I can bring up the land owner developer property development representative to give you a little bit better breakdown if you'd like. But right now, we're really pleased to have a lot of specialty retail coming in as as restaurants as well, small restaurants and some local restaurants. So I think we have a really good, strong mix. Part of the piece that that we're really concentrating are are kind of our gem of our whole development is the very center core of the development, which is the library and then the the kind of the market, Main Street Plaza shops right north of those. And that's where we're really concentrating some of those real kind of boutique types to those areas. But we've been real pleased with the mix of restaurants and retail that we already had come on board.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Um, if you don't mind, if you, there's a lot of public interest in this development. There has been for a long time. If you're able to disclose who some of those specialty retailers or restaurateurs are, I think that there would be a lot of interest if you're able to discuss that.
Why don't I have Dave McKinney come up?
Counsel, my name is Dave McKinney. I'm with DMG Real Estate Partners, twenty five thirty seven West State Street, Louisiana, eight three seven oh two. Would you like me to address other people we're talking to or?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Yeah, if you're able to describe, you know, the specialty retailers and others that are coming in. I I think part of the concern is that there was a very specific plan, at least from my review, that was you kind of given your pivoting a little bit. I'm curious how you're how you're meeting that original intention of having specialty retailers and and restaurants and kind of a mixture of that sort of those different uses.
Sure. First of all, when we started talking with the bank, you know, this location, we were thinking that was specialty retail, retail banking. Now, in talking with staff, it was determined that it was more financial use or office use. So that's why we're here tonight. Other uses that we've other people that we've signed leases with stretch from restaurants, sit down restaurants, family style restaurants, more quick service restaurants. We do have a lot of drive through uses now with COVID. Other retailers other than Winco, we've talked with pet category. We've talked with home improvement. You know, quite a few different uses general. Is there something specific or? I could give names, but you know, somewhat confidential.
I don't think we're asking you to disclose anything confidential, but it just feels like there was one direction that was going, and now this feels a little bit different. So it was one, just wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about the vision now for this development.
We think the vision is pretty close to what we've always talked about. It's a mixed use development. We'll have residential, office, civic. We do have the library lease signed also. In fact, I believe we have a building permit ready to go with that. So we think it's consistent with what we've always talked about. We are making some enhanced pedestrian area and plaza area that we think is really exciting, that people will really enjoy. And so I think we're consistent with what we've always talked about.
Councilman Strater.
I'm I'm good now.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. McKinney, I I appreciate, again, wanting to respect the confidentiality of your, the process of working deals, and we don't want to want to step into the mud on that. But I I think what we're council member Strayer is getting is probably in the same place that I'm at, which is that I think we all left number of years ago really excited about this plan. And I think what Councilmember Strayer is trying to get to is, which is why I'm too, is helping me understand how what you're doing gets to the intention of what council supported when this was last before us. And and what I'm hearing is you think that the bank, even though we view that as financial, you viewed that as specialty retail. And I'm just trying to figure the nexus with that.
Well, that's what we thought, but we were informed that, no, that's more of a financial institution and that still would like to do a financial institution. And so we now have it under contract to be for ICCU to take that state. That's why we're here tonight to make sure it's okay with us.
So Dave, I don't know if this is a question for you or the architect, but recently sent a letter to ITD concerning if they're going to you do CFIs or not moving forward. We, you know, there's one envisioned here. That's why we have this nice giant buffer on the northwest corner. If they come back and say, yep, CFIs are gone, traditional intersections are what we're all about in 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 this area. Does how how or would this northwest corner potentially change in your mind if that were to be the case? Is there a room up there that you would want to come back and put in something else in the future? Are you thinking about that or is this just loss at this point in time?
I think what we would do is just enhance landscaping, gateway signage, make sure that the presence on the section looks really nice, trying to do that anyway. But as you know, in ITD right away, we need permission to do that. As far as building a building or something in that area.
Okay. Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, Mr. Cork, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we had one, Sally Reynolds.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Sally Reynolds, one one six six West Bacall Street. If you'll permit me just a personal, a doctor unexpectedly paralyzed my vocal cords today at two o'clock. And I used up a lot of that talking on my last three minutes. So excuse me if I for the halting speech. So I have been actively involved.
Sally, you want some water, to help?
No, I'm good. I have some. It's just it just needs to come back. So I have been actively. So I have been actively involved in this application and I attended the neighborhood meeting on this particular change. I knew when this development was approved that the developer would make lots of requests to modify the development agreement, and this is the first of those. So I'm grateful for the city code that requires the public to be notified when substantial changes are requested. Now, while this change merited another public hearing, in my mind, it is not a change that materially alters the development. Sure, the residents would really prefer more restaurants over another bank. We have tons just in that square mile like the Davis has said, too, just opened up in the last month. And there's actually an ICCU already in the parking lot right across the street at Fred Meyer. We've got two, you know, car washes and now we're going to have two ICCUs. But I realize the developer cannot control the demand for land. And as residents, we cannot dictate exactly what businesses we'd like to see in the development. So because the change is another use that would fit within the mixed use community, like staff said, I'm not in opposition to the application. But I do fear that this is the first of many to come. And I would like the council to consider the question, when a development is approved, how closely to the approval do we expect the developer to stay? How many and what kind of changes are too many? Sure, when they're brought over one by, one by one over months and months, they may not seem big. But I would urge council to consider the past public hearing of an application and any past modifications that the developer requests, including changes that may not merit a public notification, such as, like they said, the completion of landscaping, which may be delayed in this development and any other requirements for CEOs. Um, I did want to make one because I did provide that testimony on the TCO. I actually am fine with the TCO that has been issued. I feel good about that. It's not a TCO that allows it to open to the public. And when I reached out to the building permit, he, person who issued that, he read me the parameters and I think it's completely fine that they have stalkers and everyone in there. I mean, if they want to, if they want to stalk everything and the roads get done and they take that last cone off and flip on the lights to Winko, fine, I am completely fine with that. So my question on the certificate of occupancy is mainly for public safety. Just that those roads be complete. And I realize that there are things that the applicant cannot control on roads. There's a lot of moving parts, but they can control when, when Co opens and when that traffic starts flowing. We have not seen any calming measures on Bacall and Bergman. They might have them. I haven't been updated as to where they're at with ACHD, and that's in the development agreement as well. And I will not, for the record, I will not be here next week to speak to that if it is there. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam.
Mr. Burton.
Mayor. Old school.
I know old lab is.
Comment. I, that's a great question. So to answer your concerns, which is spot on that you have them, I think the frequency of the DAs and the magnitude of the DA. So when you see two or three, if you were to see two or three successive requests, you know, one bite at a time to modify a DA, that causes great concern. Each one causes greater concern. And then any individual request that strays too far from the original approval and the basis for it. This is a big project that we had really robust discussion as to why it was approved as what it was. And so I think that will take some pretty high scrutiny to justify modifying any component of the DA. It's a complete package as is, and that's exactly what we expect. So it's difficult to make changes. I think it's intentionally and difficult. So this one very well may make sense. But if that gives some answer to, we're all very aware that we all signed a contract for a particular reason, and it's exactly what the city expects to see.
That's wonderful. Counselor member Burton, Mr. Mayor, I, I really appreciate that comment and that does provide some extra comfort to me and I'm also to the public who is so involved in this application. If I could ask one question just off of something that the developer said. He said there was a building permit for this building already, so I am very hopeful. Have they recorded the final plat? And I will say this with the caveat that I want them to record the final plat. We all do because they were only allowed one building permit before they could start building. And we want the library and we want the restaurants and we want the banks. We want it to start going and it's just been, so I'm hoping that they recorded the final plat. Has that changed Bill since last time we talked? Yay. Okay. I would like to say the residents are, at least some of the ones that I know, I'm not going to speak for a group again because that got me in trouble, but the ones that I know will be very happy to see that construction started on the other amenities that the residents were promised back there. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one of the things for Ms. Reynolds or all the other public that watched this. Play staff is really good and your staff reports to give you that history, when it got approved, when changes were requested, what was done, what decisions were made? And, and this councils have, this council has always been good at asking the same question councilwoman Schrader asked tonight is why this change? What's changed in the market? Why is it different? But just so Ms. Reynolds and the other neighbors know, I mean, that's a fairly common portion of staff reports is a history of the property and what's gone on and what's been requested. So that, that's always captured there too. So.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Neri, thank you. I really appreciate that. And yeah, I'm, I'm neutral on this application. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else I'd like to provide testimony on site? Okay. If you'd like to come forward and if there's anybody online that would like to write testimony, please use your raise the hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom platform and we can, and have you unmute yourself. All right.
Can you hear me better now?
Yep.
Denise LaFever, 6706 North Selvia Way. As far as this application goes, I'm concerned with the practice of we have an, a credit union right across the bank. And by the way, that is my bank and I like the bank. And I go to that one quite frequently, but we have one right across the way and we have a new one proposed there. I'm concerned about what is the plans for once we go back through and abandon that building? Is it going to become blight? What is the plans for that? You know, that's an impact on the city, especially since we're moving towards, you know, their advertisements for the bank is a bank in your pocket. And we're moving towards online. And so right in that area, we have Zion Bank that just opened in that area. You have ICCU Credit Union across the way. You got Beehive just around the corner. And there's another one that just opened next to Seltzer. I can't remember what it's called Icon or something like that. I don't remember the name of the bank. But you already have so many in close proximity. I was kind of, you know, mixed about the village, you know, the lender village. I testified on that, but I was excited about the fact that we were going to have more services for residential, more services for restaurants and other great things for people to go and do things with. Another bank I'm not quite as excited about and less excited unless they were going to come forward with a plan. How are you going to make sure you don't have blight on the one building that's over there? And I understand their excitement is going to have left hand turning lanes. I mean, left hand controlled lights both sides of that development. Like I said, I'm neutral. I'm just extremely concerned about the blight. I'm concerned about how that building is going to be repurposed across the street.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you. So it's nice to see you in living color.
Is there anybody else who'd like to provide testimony on this item at this time? You'd like to come forward, please? If you can say your name and address for the record, be recognized for three minutes.
Okay. I'm Dusty Wolston-Hill and I am a project manager, project manager for real estate development for Idaho Central Credit Union. And I'm the one who wants to put a branch here. And what I'd really like to do is give our local members in this area better access. And not just the easy turning lanes off the streets, but our existing location, we tried really hard to shoehorn it into a small location. And what we're finding is our membership are coming out of the drive up, coming head on with a lot of traffic coming out of Taco Bell. And we don't have the right of way because we're coming in from the left side. While the Taco Bell folks coming in from the right, and they're able to get out and our members aren't loving the access they have. We'll do our very best to find a good buyer for the other location. We'll maintain it. We'll take care of it. It's not going to become an eyesore. We just would really like to build something here that takes good care of our membership. I'd also like to state for the record, we're, we're not a bank. The difference between a bank and a credit union is we're a not-for-profit financial cooperative of our members. We take care of our members. We're not out for some big investors or forward or appointees from some big cooperative of investors somewhere. We're out for the little guy. And that's what we're doing here is taking care of our members.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Just a comment. Thank you so much for that clarity on the two locations right across the street and the background on your thought process. I'm a customer and appreciate your company. And I'm glad you're in our community here as a local business.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Appreciate you being here. I too am a ICCU member, got my little green card in my wallet. I've noticed that a lot of your projects, I think of the location on, on Vista, the project that's coming along on 10 Mile seem to have a little bit of a larger footprint than what I'm used to seeing from IC branches. Is that kind of your new model? Is that kind of your gold standard moving forward? Or is it just, we happen to see some larger projects in different segments of the valley?
I, I think it's because we, we keep doing what our members like. Our members like to be able to get in and out. Our members like to come see us. We try really hard to build the technology and we have some of the best technology in the state for getting, like our suite member over there said about getting your financial institution on your phone. And that should be able to happen. But if somebody has eschewed that, they didn't call us. They didn't get on the internet and do a face-to-face video conference with one of our people and they didn't get on their app. They drove somewhere and waited in line and parked and dealt with all of that to come see us, do our very best to make sure they can because they really want to. You know what I mean? And a lot of financial institutions are getting smaller. And a lot of financial institutions are getting rid of their physical locations. And a lot of financial institutions are getting rid of safe deposit boxes and they're getting rid of drive-throughs and they're getting rid of people and putting in ATMs that replace people. And that's not what Idaho members want in their credit union. They want good service and they want to be able to come and sit down with somebody who knows their name and cares about them. And if you've been in an Idaho Central Credit Union, you'll know that's the difference between us and your nearest fat cat bank with the big cigar. We're going to know who you are. We're not Pete from the old Disney shows. We're your local friends and neighbors who are taking care of you.
Councilman Burton, I can't wait for this.
I don't have anything to say. I just thought that that was a pretty good plug for ACCU. Oh, this is sort of fun.
Thank you, Dusty. Is there anybody else who'd like to provide testimony on this item at this time? And nobody online? Don't raise your hand. Okay. If the applicant would like to come forward and make any final comments.
Thank you again, Jim Marshall, CS H Q A. I think the last sets of comments from ICCU probably said it best on most of this. And although a lot of times when we get development modifications, DA mods come in, somebody's asking for something that wasn't quite forecasted from years ago, but when, when we do have these and we work with great clients like this, there is also that opportunity that these DA modifications are actually going to bring an improvement and heighten the development and the aesthetics to those developments. So it's not always necessarily a negative thing when we come in for requests those, but it wouldn't those we're trying to actually enhance the development. Well, if you have any other questions, feel free.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
If you could, just a couple of things. Ms. Reynolds mentioned that she hadn't seen calming measures on Bacall or other areas throughout the Paramount subdivision. If you could mention that or have a response to that. And if number, the second question that I have as it relates to the, and it's not related to this particular application that we're discussing right now, but if you could remind me what street, to what street are you, are you improving on Chindon? I don't remember if that was Linder to Locust Grove. I don't, I don't remember. If you could remind me.
Sure. Start off with the street calming pieces and, and I might have to have some help from staff too, but for the most part, we, there are some pieces in there of just getting the, the road narrow. Some of the street calming measures that would be nice to have, I mean, they're all within ACHD's jurisdiction to approve those standards. And right now I don't believe there's anything, there's no traffic bumps or those kind of traffic measures. I think if anything, it's just basically narrowing the street or I would have to go back to our civil engineer to probably get more specifics on that. Yeah, that has been something that we've had that, those discussions with ACHD on.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Burton.
But no ultimate decision has been made, just conversations with ACHD is what you're saying.
As far as I know, and I apologize that I don't have a ready answer for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I know that has been at a point of conversation with ACHD.
Mr. Mayor, just follow up. I think it's just really important those, those folks over in Paramount. I know that one of the things that, one of the, one of the concerns that they had during the application process when it was approved previous. And so I think that they would really appreciate some final, finality to that as well.
Okay. Um, and I do believe the extension.
Better version of this. We're improving from Linder on Chindon all the way to Meridian. Second phase, we will tie into our ITD. Some widening to Linder. And also built higher road. We call it West Plaza Shop Drive. Linder to Signalize all the way to Fox.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Burton.
So I appreciate you, Dave, for reminding me what you're saying is from Linder to Locust Grove or Meridian, did you say? It's going to be widened.
First phase is Meridian.
Okay.
Then there's a second phase. So when ITD improved from Eagle Road West, they actually stopped and then tapered. And when we improve from Linder to Meridian, we will taper. Ask all the possible they'll tie together low rate. And then second phase, next year, we will complete the actual widening from a taper to blight. That was always.
Mr. Mayor, I just don't remember that. I just, for some reason.
Yeah, it's part of the STAR agreement.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Mr. Court, did we have Mandy that was still looking to speak? As part of the applicant team.
Yeah, Mandy with your, I believe she's with the applicant team, had her hand raised, wanting to be.
So Mandy Brozo, CS H Q A 200 Broad Street. I understand the concerns of the traffic slowing on Bacall. We have taken into consideration working with the traffic engineer to slow all the traffic going across West Plaza Stop Drive, not making significant through traffic connections from Linder Road or Shindon to the residential subdivision to the south. Along all of the roads that we're able to, we have narrowed and provided slower intersections, bump outs, landscaping around each of them to kind of make that, you know, consideration to slow people down as they start traveling into the existing subdivision. So from the developer standpoint of what we have control of, we have made those considerations to help slow traffic down, not make the thoroughfares, not make it a continuous connection from the major highways down and do what we can to slow people down before they hit Bacall.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Um, thank you very much, Ms. Brozo. Just so I can understand one of your comments that you just made. Are you saying it's within your control not to complete the connection to the roads to the south on Bacall until the end of your development? And what's your intention?
So those are part of the, I believe the like existing construction that they're doing right now along West Plaza Stop Drive. They do have, like I was saying, at the intersections, the bold outs that slow traffic down before they take that turn down on to the residential. on to the residential, future residential subdivision and then extend on to Bacall.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Sorry, I'm, maybe I'm just not quite, not quite getting it. So I understood that you're narrowing, you're doing traffic calming on the parts of the property that you control. Are you able to not make that connection to the south until the end of construction? Is that what you're trying to say until all these shops are open? Or, or are you going to go ahead and make that connection, but you feel you're doing all the traffic calming within your parcel? Just help, help me understand what you're saying.
We are trying to make sure that we don't make a straight run from Lind, from Shindon all the way through to the south for to Bacall. Where we have West Plaza Shops Drive bisecting the lower side of the site from the residential to the commercial. We have our traffic calming measures. And then as we move down into the residential subdivision, we're also including those same traffic measures to slow it down. There you go. As we kind of come through and connect to the existing residential.
Thank you.
You can kind of see from this concept plan, you can see where Shindon comes down, but we've turned traffic across to the west. So they can't actually get all the way through. So they can't use that as a straight shot from Shindon down to the residential. And we've used kind of that sweeping line to help slow traffic down. And at all of those intersections, we've narrowed them down. Like I said, with the pedestrian bulbs, landscaping and things like that to help just calm the traffic. As far as what they're doing in Bacall, I was not aware of any kind of agreement for us to, you know, redo their streets. We are, I'm concerned with kind of our Linder Village, Origin Park plat and what we're controlling with the future residential and our commercial. Does that help answer a question?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I think so. I think, I think it just opened up, perhaps opened up some additional rabbit holes to go down. I guess I would ask staff to, if it's possible, Mr. Mayor, maybe to just follow up. Not having been on the previous city council in terms of if there were DA provisions that there were improvements required actually on Bacall. I'm not aware of that. But I, that might be a good thing to double check.
And a part of our improvements are part of the final plat that has been improved. So we can, you show the roadway improvements for West Plaza Shop Drives. And what we've done for the calming of the traffic along that.
Counsel, does the applicant have any final comments in addition or counsel any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm the Schrader.
Maybe I'll just kick us off on a discussion before we actually close a public hearing. Sometimes you're, you never know, we're in a hot water sometimes closing it. Appreciate the presentation. I, I'm not like going to lose sleep at night about the change for, you know, the Idaho central location. I don't think that's totally inconsistent with the intention for this property under our future land use map and everything. I guess I, I, I would just caution the applicant. DA modifications to this property are clearly a pretty big deal. I think you've heard that from most of city council at this point. And, and I just think if you could do a little bit of a better job, maybe if you have future requests to paint a picture for residents to get excited about what's coming and, you know, kind of get them pumped up about it, about what they are going to get here instead of just the minutia. I think that's a good thing. And I guess just a general comment, I see Brighton's in the room as well. That we're really focused on the pedestrian safety aspect of this. And so, you know, I'd love for us to double check what, what requirements need to happen, when, on these traffic calming pieces. And hope that we could just focus on that going forward. I'm, I'm in support of it. I don't know if anyone else has any comments, but those are just my main concerns. I think people need to, you know, really come prepared and, and sensitive to the public about this.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I tend to agree with Councilmember Schrader. No, no heartburn over a well-built, that's credit union bank, financial institution in that corner. But I think your point is, is well heard. Previous councils, previous planning and zoning commissions, previous applicant work, public testimony really resulted in what I thought was a really good plan. And so I've always going to be a little skeptical or hesitant to, to make those changes to the plans. I think I'm supportive of this request. I like, Councilmember Schrader, is your encouragement of the applicant to do a little bit better job of engaging the neighbors and the public around what they're doing and demonstrate to them the benefits. No, not just for the neighborhood, but for our community as a whole. I think that's good advice.
Counsel, any further comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I move that we close a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion to second the close of the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signature by Saint I. Opposed name? Yeah, I have it. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm the Schrader.
Unless there's further discussion, I don't sense any. After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, move to approve file number H 2021-0034 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of June 1st, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Now, Cork, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Hi.
Schrader.
Hi.
Burton.
Hi.
Allies, motion carries and the item is agreed to. Thank you, and we look forward to getting that library moving forward real, real soon. Next item up is a public hearing for 2021 UDC text amendment Z O eight, 2021 dash zero 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 two. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
One second here, Mayor, as I get things pulled up here for all of you.
While we go and take a three-minute recess while we get things set up real quick.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, counsel, we'll go ahead and come back from recess and as we said, we opened the public hearing and turn this over to Bill for staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Pleasure to be here with you this evening. As you recall, I was here last week going over the first round of UDC changes before you. And tonight is, is part two of that. Obviously with a larger, more topics to discuss this evening, put it, put it that way. So if you've had a chance to look at the public record and the staff report, you can see we are basically tip to tail changing on many sections in the UDC with this current round of changes. And many of them have been spearheaded with different groups. As you know, I manage the UDC focus group. And our planning manager, Caleb Hood, actually spearheaded the open space and amenity committee, which Councilmember Burton was a member of. So before I kick off into all of the changes this evening, I just wanted to extend my sincere appreciation to, to all of those that were part of that, that process. I know it can be very tedious. It takes over many, many months. There's always a give and take. There's winners and there's losers. And but at the end of the day, the goal is we all have consensus and we all kind of move forward and agree to champion the changes that are presented to you and ultimately get codified through this body and through all the other, everybody else's action. So hopefully what I'm providing to you this evening does that for everyone that participated in this process. So as I mentioned to you, tonight's presentation will coincide with essentially five exhibits. Exhibit one is something that came forward as part of our code enforcement division. I know Councilman Cavanagh is a passion, has a passion for RV parking in our community. And so he's continually brought up this topic on multiple occasions. But really exhibit one tonight is really to clean up some definitions in our UDC. And then also provide, you know, try to clarify where recreational vehicles can be made, basically any vehicle where it can be parked on the property. Lacey Oi, who is the code enforcement supervisor, is here to basically go through these changes with you. So it is a tag team tonight. She's going to do exhibit one and then I'll carry the torch for the remainder of the changes. But I thought it was important to note that we'll let her go ahead and answer any questions you have with these proposed changes. And that way she can get to her evening and then we can continue our business with the other exhibits. So I'm, I'm sure the council's had a chance to look at all of these changes. I won't go all, through all of them, line by line with you. But you can see the first page here, we're going through some definitions, clarifying. Lacey can probably let you know some of her experiences with litigation, litigating some of these cases. And so that's where a lot of these changes come from, working with the attorney's office and making sure that we have our definitions right, so that we can enforce our code better. This one's probably Councilman Cavanagh, this is the one that I had mentioned to you. This is where I, again, I want to extend kudos to Lacey and even the city attorney's office for even trying to tackle this issue because it's not an easy one to handle. A lot of us have different opinions of what we can do on our property and that's what we're all about. But at the same time, we want to make sure what we have in the books is enforceable and it's understandable by, for people. And I think Lacey's done a great job of, of explaining that and defining that better in our code. And then again, this kind of code size and then the other one goes inside with the improvements that you need to have pay parking in front of your home. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lacey and see if she has any context for you. And then you can ask her any questions with, regarding these proposed changes.
I'm Lacey Oi and I'm a little more first this time to come with some information for you guys. So I'm just going to give a few of my background on as to why the changes, other than appeasing Councilman Cavanagh. So bringing this forward just to try to resolve years of discussion that we've had. And I think between the mayor's office and council and the police department, we get this a lot and just trying to come up with something that's reasonable. So currently on parking standards, any recreational vehicle, including motorhomes, campers, utility trailers and boats are not allowed on the front of residential property, which includes their driveways. All these vehicle types must be stored behind a solid screen fence. Many people bring these vehicles home before and after a trip and find it difficult to be able to prepare or clean their vehicles, given the standards as written. The best option for these citizens is to attach their trailer or boat to a vehicle or park the recreational vehicle on the public roadway, which they are allowed for 72 hours before moving them. In some areas, this causes congestion and diminished visibility in the neighborhoods, but is within the parking regulations, therefore it's allowed. This standard requires a violator to be notified by mail with a reasonable timeframe to comply by removing the vehicle from the property or screening it behind a solid six-foot fence. The violation is listed with the misdemeanor penalty. Code enforcement is oftentimes placed into a revolving cycle when trying to enforce a standard. We notify the owner, sometimes with a verbal or hang tag warning first, and then a written notice of violation, which usually gives a 10-day compliance, which is what has been suggested to be reasonable. And then return to the property. And then return to the property to see whether the vehicle is moved from the property. Oftentimes we find the owner waited until the day of the deadline, moved the vehicle onto the roadway and will leave it there for a bit. And then place it back into their driveway until we respond for a new complaint. Because the violation is corrected each time the vehicle is moved from the property, we are forced to continuously respond each time a new violation is created. Due to the cycle of enforcement, our current codes does not give us any more authority than an effective HOA. This parking standard is not equally enforced as we generally respond to this call type reactive to a complaint. Many newer neighborhoods have CCNRs that regulate this type of vehicle within their subdivisions. We're oftentimes utilized to enforce the CCNRs per the request of the HOA or a property management company. When they receive the complaints or or complete routine drive-throughs in the area, they'll give us a list. Older areas without CCNRs request service less frequently. Therefore, those areas are created a new neighborhood norm. Where a large percentage of the homes have either one boat, trailer or recreational on their street yard. When code enforcement responds to older areas, it usually creates friction within this with the citizen that have had their vehicle on the property for several years and now feel like they're getting picked on. When code enforcement receives a complaint, we utilize a philosophy of enforce in, enforce out, attempting attempting to gain compliance or similar violations within the area. Enforcing this code on privately owned residential properties is the most common confrontational response we receive within code enforcement, oftentimes creating a dangerous situation for our officers. Code enforcement, council and the mayor's office have received complaints from citizens regarding this parking standard that feel like the regulation should be changed. Therefore, I'm requesting these amendments to the parking standard as written. When I looked up stats for 2020, we'd received 173 separate calls for parking standard violations, which included 200 vehicles in those enforcement calls. With the new code as written, it would be a 59% decrease. 102 of those calls would become compliant and only 71 would still create calls for service. The other 45 of those violations was simply moving a vehicle from being on a grass or unimproved surface onto their driveway would resolve the additional 45. With only 53 of those calls for service remaining or vehicles involved in them, included more than one vehicle, or in addition to having the vehicle plus being on an unapproved surface, possibly with a vehicle with registration inoperative, something that would still be handled under different regulations. So those standards don't change. We would still be able to change them if there was multiples, unregistered or inoperative, unlicensed vehicles on the driveways. We also added the 16,000 pounds instead of what was previously written would have made them anything that was over 12,000 pounds couldn't be on your driveway, which almost the standard 350 is registered at 12,000 pounds. So this gives us a more reasonable gross vehicle weight rating that would be enforceable as well. Stand for questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
Appreciate your work on this. I just was curious of the amount of calls that your department received, if you were able to track what percentage of them came from a property management company versus a individual citizen.
I didn't even try to do that. It's not easy to pull the data, the current system that we have. So I would have had to look at individual calls like I did to actually get the information that I gave you.
Council, further questions on this? Please, are you done with your position on this area? All right. Then Bill.
Thank you.
I'll turn this, you take it from here.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll transition. So my goal is tonight is again, go through each one of these exhibits, pause at the end of each one of them, and then just ask questions for each one of those different sections. That way we don't get everything, all the record confused as to what we're talking about. It's very clear for us staff to go make changes if necessary, as we talk about these items this evening. So the next round of changes, it would be what I call an exhibit two. And these are the changes that primarily came through me and working with the UDC focus group. As you're aware, UDC focus group is made up with area residents, stakeholders, design professionals, developers, city staff. So there's, there's a plethora and expertise that goes into sitting on this and coming up with these proposed changes. Not all of them come, come to you the way we intend. Some of them get removed and then shelved and then looked at again, revisited as we come up with better solutions. But for the most part, the ones that I brought last week to you were ones on this list. But at, again, at your request, I expedited those and removed them from this table. So again, tonight I won't go for this particular exhibit, I won't go through all of the proposed changes. I'm just curious as to whether or not the council has anything that speaks their interest on this list. I'm going to highlight a few of these for you. One, we're going to actually increase the height of the of the schools and in residential districts, we're seeing that some, some of these times, sometimes we get taller schools than what the R zones allow. So allowing them to go taller without having to go through a needed application processes seems to be prudent, especially if we have a two story school. Hospitals are going to be allowed or conditional use in the ME zone. Installation for extension of time extension for installation of landscaping, this is going coinciding with our building official. And also some of the changes that we've heard from our UDC focus group, what's, what's happening is, if you had a chance to look at the planning and zoning commission, you've probably seen the discussion on this particular item. But really what's happening is we're having people that need to get in their homes faster than the developer can complete the subdivision improvements. And we're understanding that sometimes things are out of our control. There may not be enough building supplies. There may be a short hand of qualified contractors to do the work. And so timing, there's always a finesse to getting the timing right for these developments. And so we were able to come up with some of this language to allow some residents to get into their home as we continue to work and then hold what we call a surety, which is basically we guaranteed money for those improvements. So we're just defining that process a little bit better in code as we're moving forward, based on some of the feedback that we've heard from the group.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I just had a quick question about the surety. You know, things are going gangbusters now, but things can change and maybe the world falls apart and we have a bunch of unimproved things. Is the amount of the surety sized and held in escrow to, is it sufficient to complete all of the landscape improvements? Or how is that sized?
Mayor Council, great question, Councilwoman Schrader. So essentially, the way the code's written is we break up surety into two different types. We have a warranty surety and a performance surety. For planning, we deal with performance surety. So we request the applicant to provide, there's an application and a fee. As part of that process, they submit detailed bids or the itemized work. We ask for that to be itemized. And then we times that by 110%. So we add 10% on top of those costs to handle that inflation, if you will, if we have to cash it. And then the developer can either put that up in cash, letter, creditor, bond, and then we hold that for the duration of the project and do not release that until the project is complete and we go out and do that inspection.
Mr. Mayor, quick follow up.
Councilwoman Schrader.
And so it's actually a bond. It's not that they're proof that they're bondable.
Mayor members, it's actual bond that we get verified by our finance department.
Great, thank you.
Next page here, I want to bring your attention to our multifamily parking standards. So you can see here we are increasing or adding some changes to that. So we are defining how many parking spaces are required for a studio apartment, and then also defining how many are required for guest spaces. And this name, this number came from directly from the city of Boise's code. It seemed to be a good number. I've tested this against some other multifamily developments and it doesn't seem to be too onerous for the group to be able to provide additional parking for guests. Flex space on this particular one, we're actually going to allow loading docks in commercial zones, provided that they're not visible from a public street before they were prohibited. And we're starting to see more momentum in our ME zone, which is our mixed employment zone, which does encourage industrial type uses, similar to what Kendall was doing this evening on their property. And so we want to be flexible with that and make, make sure we attract the right business. But we want to make sure whatever we do is still attractive and not a eyesore from the public street. Here's one that was a big deal to planning and zoning was just basically public hearing signs and just basically solidifying our code as to what's required for proof of posting. I would note, mention to the council that at one point, the city was toying with the concept of us taking over posting a property. After meeting with this group, we all agreed that it may be more liability for the city to take that under at this time than just leave it status quo. And so we did take that portion of it out of it, but we did strengthen the applicant's supposed to provide us still a notarized statement. And then even a map depicting where they're placing the sign so that we can share with the public that the site has actually been posted per city requirements. Next item, something new that I've requested to be added and something that you'll see probably in the near future is we're currently integrating project doc software as part of the planning process. And as part of that software package, we'll have the ability to have the applicant upload revised plans prior to them coming to you, so that we can have a memo or staff report modified or something that says we've reviewed the plans before you see it. And so what I've tried to do with this particular verbiage in the code here is just give us more time to do that. So currently, we, we've always had a condition of approval that when we want to revise plans, we require that to be to us 10 days prior to the public hearing. In order for us to look at that and get that in part of the public record, we've noted, we've realized that's not long enough. And so we're asking that to be extended. We're codifying it now. It was never codified. It was more of a condition of approval, but now we're codifying that. And now if planning and zoning commission recommend changes to you and those are to happen between the planning and zoning commission and city council hearing, the applicant will have the ability to upload that. It will get uploaded into laser fish and we'll be able to give you that information a lot quicker and the public will be, can see that faster as part of the public record as well. I think that's a pretty nice innovation that we're trying to bring not only to you, but also our public. We're still working and testing on some of the, testing that equip, that software out, but I'm hoping at some point we can share that information with you in the near future. I think, again, the next one goes, coincides with the TCO process and how that works, just more tweaks to define that. And then the last item on here is the density formula for PUD. So as you all know, we don't have density requirements for any other districts and zoning districts in our code. It's all comp plan driven. So we saw this as a holdover from that. And so we're just taking that out to make sure it coincides with the rest of the code. So in a nutshell, that's what, what I had been work, working on with the UDC focus group and I'll stand for any questions you may have regarding this exhibit.
Thank you, Bill. Council, any questions on this section? Councilman Burton.
One thing that jumped out, Bill, was as to the 15 days, you use the word shall. That it shall be continued as opposed to may. That's both ways. So is that you mean shall, or it shows up in 13 days and it's innocuous, not in contention? You're okay with it's prohibited to be heard? This language wouldn't allow us to go for it, even if we're able to, and even if the public didn't object.
Mayor, members of the council, I think that's a valid point. In planning's world, we like the word shall because we want a black and white for, for all of us. But again, I almost liked the suggestion of may. And I think that, I think the UDC focus group would probably appreciate that, to be honest with you, because they, that, that may does, like you said, maybe it's not a contentious project. Maybe there's not a, you know, that we're all on the same page. It's just more of a formality and that we can react quicker to it. So giving all of us the flexibility to do our jobs, I think, is, is a good, I think it's, it's good to change that and maybe give us that flexibility. That's what we've done in the surety. We've said may, we don't use shall. But if that's the pleasure of the council, I'm more than happy to change that.
Councilboard.
With the intent, I didn't think you were gonna be agreeable as quick on that issue. Cause I, I could see the intent that you wanted to have a firm message that, don't be late, don't get your, your amendments to staff and then to the public where they can't be analyzed detailed prior to the hearing. So get the intent of the shall. Giving you discretion to say may still might work, but.
Council, if I could point out something to get your legal mind around something, if you look at the first part of that sentence, though, if revised plans are required, so are required and made, does that really seem to align typically in, I mean, if revised plans are considered by the director, the applicant may provide those, I mean.
Mr. Mayor.
Just, just trying to get my head around. I mean, when we say are required, I'm wondering, why are they, I'm asking the question kind of more to like, why are they required? What is, what is contemplated the requirement in the first place as, and then we may or may not hold you to a date whether or not we think it may or may not be contentious or not. So that's where I was really trying to look at.
So to, to be clear, it's the last shall that I'm talking about.
No, I, I know it is, but I'm asking in conjunction with the first are required, you know, that's where I'm kind of going to, why are we requiring them in the first place? That's the question I don't know. That's.
Planning and zoning said, this looks great, except you want some modifications in the plat and the applicant says, sweet, we'll do it. We'll get it to staff in time for the council meeting. And you want to take a look at it. That scenario happens.
Is that a requirement or that you kind of want it?
Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, I think, I think a good example was even last week where we wanted changes and we didn't get them and the applicant still has a right to come forward with the plan that they want to show. I mean, that's the, that's the reality that we live in sometimes, you know. Is that, is that the right process from stats perspective? No, we want to come and bring you, we want to make sure our conditions are here too, and we get revised changes. I mean, a lot of times we might say lose lots because you have too many on a common lot, or the commission, or we want more consolidated open space, or we want you to add an amenity. And we want you to see that. We want you to see that what we've asked for and what the commissions asked for have been satisfied. And so we don't try to monkey up that record as we transition between the commission and the council.
Councilboard.
I think that question that the mayor brought up is the word required. Too deep on it, but those types of changes aren't technically required. They're requested, recommended.
That's a good point, too.
I'm, yeah, I mean, I'm, if we're requiring, I'm, I'm trying to tie the two concepts together in what is really being done here. If it's that important that we say you have to do it, I think we should tell them when they have to do it by, as compared to saying you have to do it. But when you do it, we're up to interpretation about when you really should do it.
Mayor, I think, I, I think it all stays the same. If you have to do it, you shall do it 15 days prior, period. Now, if you fail, it's the last shall becomes may. Now, if you fail to do so, may. Why not?
I think that works. I think that's a kiss of the intention.
That's the last shall. The last sentence would become may, but everything else stays. So the mandatory requirement to do what's requested doesn't change.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I think that, again, that goes back to some of the, and I can give you that context of that discussion with the group is, that's some of their reservation of codifying this is because it may not always be required or, you know, it, so to them, they don't want to slow, the developer doesn't want to slow down the process. They want their, their time in front of the commission and they want their time in, in front of city council. And as you know, time is money. But again, our, we're tasked with doing the job right and bringing you good projects. And so that's why, again, I added this as a change. If, again, we could add, you can change shall to may, I'm very comfortable with that. I think it gets, still keeps to the intent as part of this condition, or you also have the, the ability to strike it all together because we don't have it codified now. Again, it was, it was kind of my, my way of trying to appease my team that has to work on this and make the, make sure they keep track of all the work that comes in the door and gets, and give them adequate time to do their job. It's kind of where I'm coming from as their supervisor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Harry.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Burton. So when they aren't happy with Bill's answer, then they usually call me. And so I think what staff is wanting is what is I think what staff is wanting is what is your desired direction from the staff? I mean, this can go all the way to the point of the staff will recommend denial because they will not make the change that staff feels is important to the code or to the project. To, we won't recommend, we, we won't recommend approval, but again, you can move forward. And the common thing we tend to hear is you know, between council and commission could be approximately five weeks. I have to go back to my architect, redraw this plat. That all costs money when I'm going to come to this council to argue that I want the original plat. So now I have to go spend money on something else because the commission made a recommendation that you are able to, to reject. So I think that's the balance we're looking for is there are certain things obviously in code that are required and that clearly that we cannot even accept the application if it's not done that way. There are other things that staff and the athlete work together to try to get a good product in front of the commission and the council. And there usually are the one or two occasional sticking points on amenities, location, building, location, sizes, directions, that there may be some sticking points and they may have from the, from the applicant's perspective, sound legal business reasons why they want it the way they want it, and they disagree with staff's perspective or the commission's perspective. So that's where the question of required, I think, really is critical to the staff's review. If, 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 if the staff says we want a, a tot lot instead of climbing rocks, is that required or is that recommended? If the staff says we want a roadway versus a private lane, that may be required in code. Or maybe the, our interpretations of code. So I think that's the direction we're seeking. And if I'm speaking out of line, Bill, please correct me, but I think that's sometimes where the rub comes. It's more of the, 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 the details towards the end of the project. We've worked out a lot of these things and then you get to I want to have this, not that, I don't want that at all ever, you know, those are the ones that I, again, is that and, and again, the common, the common requests I get from their attorneys are that costs me money and we're going to be standing there arguing, we don't want this. So why do we want to pay for it? Now, if the council makes me do it, yep, we'll go draw it because that's the way it works. But until the council says we gotta do it, I don't want to spend the additional dollars in time because maybe I can't get it done in, in now two and a half weeks. So I can get it to the city in 15 days or, or I will get continued or might get continued. Those are the rubs that I, that I end up having to deal with. So, and then talk with Bill and say, what can we do here to make this work?
Mr. Mary, if, and when I read the adding new provision that specifies when revised plans are due to staff for adequate review. You know, to me, the, the, it almost seems not in alignment with the, the proposed language because really the, does it matter who it comes from, when, other than we just want to have time to look at it? Under any circumstance, is that the bill, what we are really trying to get to is any new plans, you want them within a certain timeframe, no matter what, no matter why. Whether it's because the applicant wants to change it or someone else asked for a change? At the crux of the issue? That's what I read it in the third column as compared to the second.
Mayor, members of the council, that, that's the problem I'm trying to solve here with this code change is you're right. It's, it can be all three. It could be what staff wants, what the commission wants.
What the applicant wants.
What's the applicant want? Sure. They could say, you know, they oftentimes with my experience, I've seen it where they might not have done exactly what the commission wanted or staff, but they've tried to do something that meant the intent. And then we're like, okay, let's, let's analyze it. Okay. We can get on board with that. Not exactly what they asked for, but it still works. You get us closer to what we were asking for and we, we compromise that way too. So I, I see your point here, uh, as far as the shells, but again, if it, if it doesn't have to be codified, we don't need to include it. We can strike it. Um, but I like the idea of, of Mr. Neri's suggestion of give me some direction on what, how you want us to communicate to the applicant. What's your expectation if staff or the planning and zoning commission recommend changes to the plans? What's, what is your expectation? That they get those to us so that we can get you the right information, not only for us to do our job, but also for the public. And they, they, they want to see it too. And I know you guys hear it all the time. They want to know those plans. They want to see the revised ones. We get it all the time.
Mr. Mayor. Councilboard.
I think the word that was used is intent and in my, in my opinion, I, I believe that the intent is always, you know, there's always good intent for sure. And I get sometimes the applicant makes some, you know, sometimes I would say that the, you know, the applicant actually listens to the cost, you know, to the residents and they make last minute deals and it may not be there, maybe vice versa. And maybe the residents don't quite, you know, didn't have a chance to see the revisions. Um, and the next day is that the scheduled public hearing. And so I totally get, um, I totally get it, but I think it's important that everyone has a fair chance to, to review the document. I think that that's really important, whether it's, uh, whether it's us or whether it's, um, the, 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 you know, the, the homeowners who have concerns or not, or, um, and so I, I don't, the, the word shall maybe that, that's pretty directive. Maybe highly recommended. I don't know exactly what words we can use, but I, I think that it makes sense for, for the process. I think, and I, it, it, at the end of the day, I, I get that there's a, there's money's time and I, and I totally understand. I get it. But at the same time, I think it's really important that we get it right. That's the most important thing is we get it right. And thankfully at the city, you know, we, we have great, you know, development partners who, you know, this doesn't happen a lot, but when it does, it, it seems to be a little bit of an issue. But again, I don't want to make it sound like there's bad intent. I don't think, I, I've never, it's, I can't think of a time I've ever thought to myself, ah, tricky. I don't, I don't think I've ever I don't remember a time that's ever happened. I, I think the tent is great. I just think that sometimes we get busy and the process gets a little rushed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I think if we change the second shell to may, I, I think it, it does give a lot more flexibility. Um, right? So first it was required, which is a strong word. This assumes it was required. And then, um, if someone wants to move forward, then they're rolling the dice and they may be continued. And that's an outcome that could happen if they don't, you know, provide it in advance. I mean, I feel like that gives, I hope that would give staff a lot of flexibility, but at least then it, there's a clear expectation set. And they could communicate clearly. It's required, then that, that hopefully would set the right expectation and at that point.
It, based on what I believe, if I was rewriting this, I would say revised plan shall be provided X amount of days prior to the scheduled hearing for review. Their plans are not received within the established timeframe, the project may be continued. I mean, that's really the crux of what we're trying to get to. The question would be, what is the timeframe? 15 days, 10 days? I, I think you could not be as strict in the wording to get to what we want to accomplish. I would be fine with 10 days, but why, why 15, why 10? I don't know. I don't do the work. Will you take that feedback, Bill?
May.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mayor, Council, I think I, I heard you loud and clear. I, I almost liked your language too, Mayor. So yes, I can certainly get that, that changed if that's the direction of the ready to move on. I take it. Right. So exhibit number three has to do with some changes to our landscape ordinance, which is 11, three, chapter 11, or excuse me, title 11, chapter three, article B. Um, this is not quite a rewrite, but just basically going through the ordinance and cleaning it up and trying to define that we really want to start having enhanced street buffers along our arterial roadways. More than just arterials, but along our street buffers, uh, mostly collectors and arterials. Um, so you'll see a lot of strikeout underlying changes. As for all of you that haven't gone through this process before, underlying meaning it's new text, strikeout is um, the old text being removed and replaced with new potentially. But what I really wanted to, um, point to your attention was really the, probably the biggest change that came about to this sec, there were some modifications from planning and zoning commission to this body. And that's, has to do with, uh, my work and really Brian McClair's work with the city arborist to try to nail down some appropriate tree species for our community. Uh, all of you probably know Matt Perkins. He's passionate about for urban forestry and, and he'll be coming before you on an urban forestry plan, uh, moving forward. But that's where a lot of this, this, again, this got sent out to a lot of different experts, um, design professionals to provide commentary on it. More than what my expertise is. All I do is try to enforce it and understand what we want to, to achieve here. Uh, but, uh, what we've added here since the planning and zoning commission here is all of these tree species. And I'm not going to pretend to know, I know how to pronounce all of them. But you can see there's quite a few here. Um, so there's only, these are some preferred species for the city. And then there's also prefers, a lot of you may not know that we do have water wise conserve, conservation in our, uh, landscape buffers too. And so he's gone ahead and strike, struck out all of the previous trees and he's given us another new updated list to include as part of this effort. And again, I have to commend him for getting that to me and getting this added. Quite, quite a few trees here that we can, can utilize as part of this, the water wise concepts. And then that kind of go coincides with some of this verbiage ties back into kind of his revised list. And then the, we also have a, what we call a treasure valley tree selection guide. Um, that's found on our website and that has all of the various tree species that do well in this region as well. Kind of explains the characteristics of those trees. And then I also want to get down to, um, the other crux of, at least the meat of this discussion tonight is really landscape buffers and just trying to enhance how those look along the street buffers. Uh, so Matt, I'd have to really commend again, Brian, he's, he did a lot of this and wrote a lot of these standards. I'm just kind of carrying the torch for him this evening. But he went ahead and proposed a lot of changes to clarify that a street buffer along a road is more than trees and lawn. It, it needs to be enhanced. It needs to have boulders, permabark, a mischievous shrubs, ornamental grasses, you know, just a variety of plant materials to really look enhanced and attractive. And, uh, this also coincides with some of the changes that I will be discussing with you in the open space standards. It sent you back to this section of code and that's why we, we dove in on this and made those changes to coincide with the open space changes. And so what Brian has done, he's kind of defined what this to look at and how much limited, um, lawn you're supposed to have a part of that buffer. But as part of this effort, he also provided us some nice figures. So essentially all of this new text that you see here coincides with these figures in the code to show a, a developer or an applicant how they can achieve an attractive buffer along the street. And again, when we get to the open space standard, you'll see where buffers count towards that open space that has not changed. And that, that is current as and it's currently encoded, we allow those to count.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, is this the right section to talk about the fee and lieu concept or?
I'm going to get there too. So yeah, we're transitioning to that one, but I wanted to, I, I think that's a discussion that I do want to have with council this evening. And then again, we're just changing, a lot of this is existing code. And just again, improving on verbiage and removing old language. So like, again, not a lot to really discuss here as far as code changes with you. It's just more cleanups. Um, but here's one where, you know, we're always in front of you asking about land, land use buffers when we have residential up against commercial or commercial up against residential. And the applicant has the ability to ask for a waiver. Well, the way the codes were currently written, it says trees touch at maturity. Well, in this particular change, we want the trees to touch at the, at five years. So that's, that, what that means is you're going to have more trees in that buffer for denser buffer. A lot of the landscape plans that you see before you on the screen are showing at maturity, landscape plan showing at maturity. So this is something that will be within your purview as we come forward with, you know, applicant wants a reduced buffer. That's something we'll have to take under consideration, whether the buffer is large enough to accommodate additional trees. Is it, is it wide enough? Is there enough area to plant trees in that area? So something to take under consider this evening, consideration this evening. And then going back to Councilwoman Schrader's discussion leading into the end Luffy. So I know this body is very aware of and this came up at planning and zoning commission too, is we're starting to see a lot of farm, farm ground getting eaten up and a lot of these farmers have beautiful mature trees on their property. And usually when you have a large development over multiple acres, it's pretty easy to mitigate existing trees. But when you start getting these infill properties, it's getting more and more difficult. And the most recent one I can think of is Lupine Cove, which is a five acre development off of McDermott Road, which had over 1300 or almost, excuse me, 1900 caliber inches to mitigate. A five acre development cannot accommodate that many trees on it. Uh, with 30 homes on it. And so it, we're trying to work with the parks department to come up with other ways to mitigate trees. Um, you guys are always part of the budget process. We've always got enhancements to our parks, always changing out trees in downtown. Um, Matt Perkins and myself actually reached out to the city of Boise to try to understand their system. They do the same thing here. Um, so for the most part, our code does align uh, with a lot of the different jurisdictions in the community. What we don't currently have in place is this fee and lieu. And essentially the way it works in the city of Boise is they, they basically charge you $200 uh, per caliber inch you're going to mitigate. Then they basically tree bank that and use it to enhance their parks or add trees elsewhere throughout their community. I was hoping to have some of that further vetted for you this evening, uh, but I didn't feel it was important to take this out yet. I, I think this is, again, I don't want to spend a lot of discussion on this tonight because I think it really should be, this is something that I think parks is probably champion for you more than the planning department, although it's in our code. Uh, the city of Boise's fees is in a completely different section of their code than even their zoning ordinance. But I told Matt that I would have somewhat of a, I would have a discussion with you this evening and just take the temperature of the council to see if that's something they even want to entertain moving forward. Does that's something that you want planning staff and parks department to work on and bring back something as part of a fee schedule in the future? As you know, our fee schedule is coming up in front of you here soon with the budget. Uh, we want to make sure our, our fees are in alignment, um, with our services. Uh, but really these, these are a lot of the, the meat of the changes tonight is really the street buffer for this, this particular exhibit. It's the street buffer changes. And then how we mitigate trees elsewhere in the city. Uh, so with that, I'll just conclude my remarks and stand for any questions on this particular exhibit.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, so with the feeling, I, it's an interesting idea. I guess one of the things I was thinking about, it seems like it's worth exploring. I guess part of the challenge is it may not be as simple as just replacing something, right? So I've been getting, for some reason, a lot of calls lately about trees. I don't, they're all, all the tree folks are talking together, giving me calls, but there have been, you know, some cases where there's a special species of bird in a certain tree. There are also just really old trees that provide a lot of shade, a lot of, um, carbon sequestration. And there's a lot of different benefits that come from trees. So I guess I was curious about this concept as kind of like our method of alternative compliance. Like if there was a level of discretion where staff could say, okay, maybe the arborist or park says it's really not practical in this case to preserve certain trees, then they could approve it as a method of alternative compliance. That made more sense to me than the way it was written here. It made it seem like automatically someone could just pay. Um, and there could be additional reasons or, or considerations with certain trees. I guess I didn't see a level of discretion here. So I guess I'd ask you to sort of react to that, um, concern.
Yep. Mayor, members of the council, I think that, that's a lot of the discussions we had. You hit it spot on. We have in the past used the arborist's discretion to allow trees elsewhere. But in the past, we've had a lot of parks coming online like Kleiner, uh, which could use a lot of trees. We've had Rita Husky Park. We've had Keith Bird Park. I mean, a lot of these heroes park got expanded and added trees. So we've had the opportune, opportunity to do that. And that, you're right, that is the mechanism that we could use right now is alternative compliance to do that. And that's where I want to, that's where I'm at tonight, where I'm not comfortable with saying we should be charging a fee for this until we fully, fully understand what that is. And continue to use that alternative compliance method where maybe. And continue to use that alternative compliance method where maybe the applicant can work with the park. That's why I think it's important that the parks department bring forward that, that plan to you and share what their vision, the vision they have for their urban forestry guide or whatever. I forget what Matt used for the terminology, but just sharing their vision for the department and what they plan on doing in the future. And kind of marrying up this process with what they plan on doing in the future and offsetting some of these trees elsewhere in the city. I think there's a lot, a lot of value to do that, to be honest. Again, if, if the council would like to explore this more, we certainly don't have to approve something like this this evening. We can, we can strike it or we can keep it in as a placeholder until we do define something. And just know that we're not going to enforce it until we actually have something in place to do so.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Members of the council, I, I, you know, the, the only other place I could think of that has a fee in lieu is the downtown parking. And of course that's tied directly to a, a, a parking facility being built. So that was the intent of that. And that's pretty common. So I, I know Mr. Baird from my department was the parks attorney in Boise a while back and I don't know if he had a part of that, but there's no harm in putting it into place because until we actually establish a fee, we can't collect it. So I think there's some research that needs to be done on how these are established and what are you based them on and, and is the council comfortable with it with saying, well, instead of you having to put a, replace a tree on your property, you're going to replace a tree somewhere else, wherever we decide that to be. And so I think we probably need to do a little bit more research into that, but I, again, I don't have a concern if you want to put it in. So it's aware that that's out there because until we actually pass a fee, we're not going to do it anyway.
Just two cents to throw into this is kind of like impact fees that you pay for parks are part of your tree replacement program on any property you do. I understand trees may be viewed a little differently, but what about a farmland mitigation in lieu of fee? Where are you going to go replace the farmland that you're doing? You, you can take this to whatever level you want. From that standpoint, so personally, I don't know that I'm a fan of this and I would not put something in our code unless we are going to do a fee. Cause I think it, I don't know what message it sends just by leaving it out there. So I would at least ask for greater consideration before we just add it without a plan or purpose or a thought. And, and while we're on this section, since we added a bunch of trees, I saw one, can we take out the Ohio buckeye tree from our list? Just throwing it out there. I don't know that we really need that one. All right, Chris.
What it's worth, I like the Buckeyes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
I think I'd be okay with leaving it in just for further discussion, but there, there's a lot here that we need to discuss. Maybe some, some of our development partners have some thoughts about this and some residents, I know some, some folks that were on the open space committee are here as well. Maybe they have some thoughts on it as well. Be more than happy to listen to what they have to say.
Mayor, council, I'll, I'll go ahead and proceed and that way we'll, maybe we'll circle back at the end of the discussion if you wouldn't mind. Any other questions on this section? All right, now we're getting to some of the rewrite of our open space. Yeah, there's a lot of meat here if you want to use that, coin that phrase there, but I think this commission, this body, the council really understands that in the last five years, we've been trying to do something with their open space standards. I've brought numerous proposals to you. We've made some, some minor tweaks. But this time after the adoption of the, the plan, we, we heard from the residents and we heard from you that we need to look at our open space standards. Want to let the, the council know that Councilwoman Schrader reached out to me with an email today, asked me to, to kind of vet these, some of these open space standards and asked me if I'd look and share with you some of the developments that are out there that would meet these standards and then look at other jurisdictions throughout the valley and give you that insight as to what they're requiring for open space. So what I'm going to do is probably just go through a lot of these changes with you and then share that, that feedback and that information with you. I won't probably share a lot of the developments in the community with you. I think we have experts here that, that do this for a living that can probably testify on a lot. From the public comment that I've received in particular to this change, they have some discussions with you tonight on this topic, this particular exhibit. So I'll let them go ahead and give their perspective of, of whether or not the proposed changes are achievable or, or meet the vision of the plan. But what I can tell you is there's, there's a lot of time and effort that went into this. And hopefully you guys, again, I concur with some of the proposed changes tonight. So really we wanted to align our open space inside amenities with our comprehensive plan, which we've done here. Trying to align that a little bit more based on the vision, some of the feedback that we heard. And what we're trying to do here is really just increase the quality and the quantity of the open space in the amenities. We want to give the developer flexibility, but we want to make sure that we give them enough tools to do that. And I'm hopefully some of the testimony here tonight, you'll, you'll see that we've done that or at least got to that goal. A lot of the other particular difference between this change and the, the next exhibit that what we've tried to do here is of actually, we've actually split out the multifamily standards from this section of code and better defined it in their own section of code. So we've tried to bifurcate those two standards. So it's clear this is really for residential and then the specific use standards for multifamily have their own open space requirements. So you can, you know, the current code is 10%. A few years ago, we did come forward with a proposed code change that when you had sixteen thousand square foot lots in your development, you only had to provide 5%. That is staying on the books. Probably the biggest change tonight is really this table that's before you and how we're going to require open space based on the zone that you request for development. Now there have been some slight tweaks to this from planning and zoning commission to you, you to this evening. I realized after the planning and zoning commission that we did not have any T and R or T and Z zoning addressed in this matrix. So that was added to the 15% criteria. So here in the R2 zone, we're going to require that we have an R2 development 10%. And then as you increase in the zone and the density, the idea is you get more open space as you increase the density. That's really the premise of, of the change here tonight. All of us had a difference of opinion on the committee as to what that number should be. But again, these are the changes that are before you tonight. And I know some of the applicants in attendance tonight are not the applicants, but some of the public testimony today will be asking you to probably modify some of these open space numbers here. One thing that was brought up is what if you have multiple zones in, in a development and that you can have that. We, we often see R4 and R8 developments. And so basically we're going to take that aggregate and then divide it by the number and get a baseline, just an average between the two and come up with a number. Here's how we kind of justified some of the open space standards and how the applicant should demonstrate a lot of this verbiage that you see in section two here is really incumbent upon the applicant to tell us that in their narrative. I'm, I'm going to tell you, some of these, these standards are subjective. They are in left up to interpretation, not only between us, staff and the applicant, and we spent quite a bit of time discussing that as part of that open space committee. And we felt that we were all in consensus that the applicants can do a better job of telling us how this open space is supposed to be utilized and how they're, what demographic they're trying to, to serve. I think from my standpoint, I think that helps us as staff to clearly communicate what the development is trying to achieve. Not only share that with the P and Z commission, the council, but also the public. So they know how we derive to our recommendation to, to both of you, both the commission and the city council. The one, the one item, the one thing that I do appreciate about the changes tonight is just defining how, you know, some of these proposed changes are better served by showing you it in a graphic than showing you in text. And I know some of the representatives here tonight want to talk about some of these changes with you, particularly this one in front of you where we have fifty, fifty percent of the homes fronting on the open space. That, that was quite a bit of a topic of discussion, not only at P and Z, but also during the, the committee meetings. A lot of the development community felt like that was, that 50% was a little high. And so we did receive public testimony and there will be a presentation tonight where development community is actually asking you to lower that to 30%. And some cases go down to 20% if there's an intersecting pathway. And it's, it's important to note that some of these photos that are in this, this text amendment or these texts, or at least in this part of the exhibit, they're actually from actual developments in Meridian. This one here is in Hill Century Farms, if I'm not mistaken, the one on the left. And the other one is part of Paramount Director. Where all the homes are fronting on open space. So again, just defining what you can take, count as, as open space. And again, more graphics to go kind of coincide with what that verbiage means, which I think is, is good. Everyone, the picture says a thousand words, right? Here's where we come back to the, the buffer width and how some of that would be enhanced, going back to what we've talked about in a previous exhibit. And how you would make, you know, if you do those certain things, you get to count 100% of it.
Yeah. If we could go back to that, just why does it matter front, fronting or backing on the house? Can you explain the rationale why there's a, why is that a differentiator?
Well, if you look at, if we can go up, there's a couple of different reasons for it. One is we want to make sure it really comes down to having your eyes on open space. And that can be handled in many different ways. You can have the fronts of the units on the open space. You can have open fencing on the back of the open space. What we want to do is not wall it off and, and you got to have it open from the street. I think that's really what the goal is. But for whatever reason, I think the idea is just to have people's eyes on it, create that sense of neighborhood community. When you have people orienting the front doors on open space, it just seems to be more inviting. But there's, there's multiple reasons why we do it, but for whatever reason, this particular 50%, the consultant that we worked with proposed that number. Found some examples. I can tell you, we spent quite a bit of time discussing it. A few of the committee members actually wanted to remove it. Cause they weren't quite sure what that meant. But again, I, I've, I've seen some of the language that has been proposed by the applicants. Or not, excuse me, not the applicants, but some of the committee members as part of the public record and I, I tend to agree with them. I, I like the idea, maybe 50% is the right number, maybe 25% is, as long as you have an intersecting pathway. I don't know if that answered your question, mayor, but the, the intent is really to keep eyes open on it and just make it more inviting.
Yeah, I mean,
Make it to the street.
I, I, I see it on one hand, but I'm like, if, if it was my house, we spend all of our time in our backyard. We never spend time in our front yard. So our eyes would never, ever be on that space. Now maybe it'd be different if it was in front. I don't know, but that's kind of like what, what is the defining factor other than a design choice? Cause that's what it really seems to be as a design choice as compared to be a practical standpoint. That's, you know, we, you know, anyways, okay. Just wanted to see what the rationale was and I'm hearing is because someone recommended a number to us.
Of my rec, yeah. And my experience with it is typically is alley load, right? You would have an alley, you don't really have a front yard. So you, you have compact housing. So you want this grand open space for people to front on and use it. Cause they don't have a lot of yard when you have a highly loaded homes.
Okay.
I'll let, again, I'll let some of the public testimony share their ideas on what they want changed there as part of those. And if I remember, recall a few years ago, I actually came forward with a fencing standard change to where we would, in certain cases, we wouldn't even allow fencing or require fencing if that was the case, be homes clustered around open space and just made it feel like it was part of a more of a cluster development or open space rather than individual yards. But again, like you said, mayor, that's, that's personal preference. Again, a lot of these are just more taking certain sections out of the code and just clarifying them in others. So not, not a lot of changes here. Here's one that particularly waterways that are part of a open space. I think you guys have seen this on a number of occasions. Where it can't count more than 25%. You got to have it in conjunction with an amenity. So that it counts. Again, you can see an example of that. And then really another modification or at least a big change to this section of code is the side amenities. I think it's, it's pretty amazing how how much we've expanded that list. And now we're kind of, we're, we're actually proposing before you this evening to do that as part of a point system. So now the developer or anyone wanting to develop their land can either come with one grand amenity or multiple amenities. It just depends on what they want to present to you as part of their, their developments, almost like a, a menu. You get to pick and choose what you want as part of your development. Again, this is something that was, was highly talked about. And rightfully so. It's when you look at this list of amenities here, you can see here, each one of them have a point value, but who's to say one's more valuable than the other? One could be more important than somebody else. Somebody may love having a clubhouse and somebody may find a, a multi-use pathway more beneficial to the community. Again, this, this point system was something we discussed at, at length. And I don't know if it's the right number or not, but again, this is where we've landed based on some of the feedback that we got. But you can see we have extensively extended this list. And I've actually took some of these amenities and add, apply them to the multifamily standards as well to give some greater flexibility to those as well. But I wanted to pause there and, and then again, I'll kind of this section of quality of life amenity standard. This is basically looking at all of those and then further defining how those are supposed to be developed on the property. The standards, if you will, that coincide with those particular amenities. We wanted to make sure whatever we were, if we were going to give you a point for it, we wanted to make sure that there were specifics on how they were supposed to be developed on the property. And we don't currently have that in code. So it's nice to add that and define that a little bit better in the code. But with that, that really concludes the proposed changes here and I'll stand for any question. Oh, actually I wanted to touch bases back with what I said in my opening remarks about other municipalities and what they're doing. So if, if you recall, I'll go back up to that exhibit here. Oh, and Meridian, this is what we're doing. This is pretty common. I've, I've seen this in other codes in the valley. So Boise, if you do a standard subdivision, there is no open space requirements. If you do a PUD, you're providing 10%. Eagle, 18%. And 15% of that has to be active open space. In Kuna, no standard open space for standard subdivisions. PUD is 10%. And then lastly, I had a chance to look at Nampa, nothing for a standard sub. It talks about open space, but doesn't have a number. But in Nampa, if you do a PUD, minimum 15%.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, Councilman Cavanagh.
Bill, just to, can you share with us again, I, I heard 18% for eagle with 15% active?
Yep, she'll be active.
What is, what is, sorry, Mr. Mayor? What's active open space?
Mayor, members of the council, I, that's their definition. I don't enforce their code, but I'm sure there's probably a definition in their code that defines what that is. Again, we have other experts in the, in the audience that do business in other municipalities. Maybe they can give you insight what that means.
Must include running water.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, this kind of fits not only the single family, but the multifamily, I guess. I wanted to understand the rationale and kind of what the work was that came out of the open space committee. So it looks like with the zoning, as you go up in zoning, which makes sense, it's more likely you're going to have density. You're going to go up, you know, from 10%, these folks have yards, bigger yards. Now you're, you're requiring more open space. What was the rationale behind setting the cap on the multifamily at 15% in light of the R15 at 15%?
Yeah. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Schrader, I, I can hold off on that question until we get to that section and, and share that with you. And if you want to dive into that, but I think the crux of it is, is when we, we sat down with the open space committee and we were toying with changing, taking the two standards and we wanted consistency. And that's really where it comes down to. What I did is when we met with, we had a sideline, we had some meetings after the UDC focus group with a handful What I did is when we met with, we had a sideline, we had some meetings after the UDC focus group with a handful of committee members that volunteered to meet with us to talk about open space for multifamily. And they were concerned that the multifamily developments were requiring more open space than this section of code. And so when we met with them, they had spreadsheets. We talked about what the intent behind, again, going back to that, the intent of the code was. And we were realizing that although we were saying 15% open space in residential and multifamily, we were requiring 10% plus we were requiring more common open space based on the square footage of the unit. And in most cases it was going, it was in excess of 15%. And so what we agreed to as committee members was, we agreed to saying that you could have more than 15%. But the intent would be the minimum is 15% if you hit all of that other criteria. And I'll expand on that because the, that was something that was discussed at the planning and zoning commission. And they didn't quite like my verbiage, so I went and tweaked that for tonight's discussion to clarify that point a little bit more for you. That's why I said if we can hold off until we get to that exhibit five, provide that clarification for you. And then as far as your question about developments that are meeting these standards currently, uh, one that I can think of is TM Apartments, TM Creek Apartments over there off of Tim Mile and Franklin. Uh, I did, we did that phase two project and I believe they had an excess of 22% open space, if I crunch the number. Um, under the code that I'm proposing this evening, it would be max fifth, minimum 15%. Or they may exceed that if they chose to. In this case, I would imagine they're going to choose to do that because they're, they're able to.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. That's really helpful. And I know we're, we're having conversations kind of open and we'll see where it goes. I guess part of what I was trying to ask with my request for like a comparables analysis with other cities is to sort of understand what other communities are doing. And um, I think it's great to know what the other communities here in the Treasure Valley are doing. I also think it might be interesting to pick one or two, you know, kind of who do we want to be when we grow up? Examples and that might be hard to find agreement on, but maybe to just get some examples nationally as well of what's worked for people. Like I'd be curious, like Boulder or a place like that, kind of what their standards are. But um, yeah, I went back and looked through it, a couple of examples myself. And I've seen a lot of really fantastic developments that have well exceeded the 15%. So just wanted a flavor for why we, how we pegged that 15% is kind of our high watermark. I have a little bit of a flavor for that now. I'm sure we'll hear some public testimony. Um, and then just wanted to understand following the UDC focus group and in the UDC focus group, what was the engagement with? Not just the development community, but the community as a whole, um, whether it's, you know, groups of interested neighbors or folks that commented on the comprehensive plan, what kind of opportunities have there been for public input?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I, I can't speak to that. I didn't really spearhead the open space committee, uh, section, but I know they were invited. I don't, I know Sally was part of that committee and I'm, I'm hopefully she shared that with, with everyone out there. So they were getting an understanding of where we were going. From the standpoint of open space inside amenities. Because again, we did hear, we, we did hear everyone loud and clear, but did we do a, a formal rollout and, and have town hall meetings to discuss all of that? No, but what we did do is we did send out an open space survey. And we took those results and kind of landed on that and built from there. And that's how we got to where we are tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Is it, doesn't have to be right this moment, but I think it would be great if we could take the results from the survey and kind of ground back how we think that's meeting what we've heard at some point. Doesn't have to necessarily be this exact meeting or this moment, but I do think it would be really important to try to connect back. Okay, this is what we heard. This is how we think we're meeting what we heard. And sort of show that direct connection between the feedback from the community and how we're trying to meet that concern.
Bill, just a question. RA, R15 or both of 15%? I'm sure this came up as why not 15, 12, 10 and eight, for example, instead of both the 15?
Mayor, council, I wish I had an answer for you, Mayor, on that one. I, I didn't, I wasn't able to attend all of the open space committee meetings. So I'm not sure that that was one that I wasn't able to attend. Maybe Councilman Burn can give you some context on that. I know at one point when we started out, we were actually five, eight, 12, 15. And actually, no, I showed up at the meeting and it was changed. So I think there was just more consensus that we should still stay with 10% and then work our way up from there. And that's where the group landed on it, to be honest with you. Any more on this top? Any questions? All right, perfect. And I'll transition to the, the last exhibit of the evening and then we'll open it up for public testimony here. So the, as I mentioned to you previously, this has been separated out now, uh, before what was happening. If we had a multifamily development in the commercial districts, uh, we weren't applying UD 11, 3G, three standards to multifamily. Because it wasn't in an R zone. But if we had a multifamily development in an R zone, we were double dipping. We're actually making the applicant comply with 3G standards and complying with the common open space standards in 11, 4, 3, 27. Uh, so we realized we needed to get that clarified. So what we did is, as I've mentioned to you, we've basically bifurcated these two. And I made it clear in the common open space that multifamily is subject to its own open space regulations. So again, tying back, uh, trying again for consistency, we've tried to tie in the purpose statement back to the, the comprehensive plan, uh, which is again identical language to what we had in exhibit four. And then renumbering everything. And then really the, the gist of the changes for you tonight is how we get to that open space and what we're going to require. Um, so currently what we're doing, anything over five acres, we're going to require baseline of 10% open space. Again, they're going to have to demonstrate how they're meeting these standards. Through a, uh, through their design and through their narrative. And then also, this is what I was alluding to earlier, where I said anything over 20, uh, anything over 20 units will have to now provide a 50 by 100 area, minimum area for, uh, consolidated open spaces part of the development. And then as the development size increases, we're going to leave it up to staff and/or the planning and zoning commission to determine if a 50 by 100 area is large enough for a multifamily development with 300 units. Or should that central open space spending be increased, be commensurate to the size of the development? And I think that's pretty consistent with other language that we have in the code. Uh, that leaves it up to our discretion and also the planning and zoning this commission's discretion to determine whether or not there's adequate open space. And then of course, if they can't meet this standards, then it would be eligible for alternative compliance. You could get a project downtown where it's infill and may not be able to get all that open space. And, uh, we want to certainly make that flexible for infill projects moving forward. And then, uh, in addition to the baseline, this isn't anything new to code. This is typically what we have in code, just in a different, presented a different way in a different section. But essentially, uh, you have to provide a certain amount of common old space for the square footage of the residential unit. Um, these numbers have not changed. And so, and then here's the certain dimensional standards in which they comply. So when you take all of this together, there is the very real possibility that you're going to exceed 15% open space. And so based on the discussions that I had with planning and zoning commission, I went back to the drawing board and, and wordsmithed it. So basically what I'm saying is if the development meets all of those requirements, complies with all the requirements of the subject section, the minimum qualified open space for the overall development shall equal 15% or may exceed. So essentially the minimum is going to be 15%. But the applicant will have the ability to have more if they chose, if they choose to. And I'd let you know that I, so what I did this afternoon, I, I looked at this standard and I took a five acre development with 50 units proposed on it and it came out to about 15% open space. Now I took another development that was 100 units, 112 units on five acres and was over 18% open space. So the, the, the reality is you're going to get more open space, but there is a chance that someone can say, I only have to provide 15%. So that, that's a real possibility. And that's, and that's some of the discussion that we had as part of the group. So hopefully that verbiage makes sense to all of you. Um, I try to leave it flexible, but again, the intent here is that you have, still have to do all these things. But the minimum is going to be, you're going to be kept, the overall development, if it exceeds all of those criterias can add, would be 15%. And then here's some of the open space standards that I changed. Um, I've been seeing a lot of dog parts as part of developments, not only residential, but multifamily. So I thought that was a, a good ad. I like the idea of the commercial outdoor kitchen where people can barbecue and, and create that sense of community. I thought this was a great quality of life amenity. And then a lot of our multifamily developments are starting to get multi-use pathways. So why not along our, our creek corridors? So why not allow fitness courses as well? So I thought that was a good amenity ad. Here I also thought a picnic area, again, anytime we can get people congregating on open spacing and building that sense of community and getting to know their neighbors. I think it's important to a development. So I thought that was a good ad as well. And then, uh, one thing that you saw as part of the common open space standards were this concept of multimodal amenities. And certainly, uh, as we develop these multifamily developments along our transportation corridors, uh, we have to be ready, uh, uh, I mean, our transportation network requires multi-use pathways. It requires bike pass or bike lanes as part of the road improvements. So why not add those as a minute? If, if, if the developers were willing to add bike stations, parking right lots, transit stops. I've seen that on quite a few of our multifamily developments. And even Boise has just recently changed their code to allow charging stations for electric vehicles. So I thought that was also a good idea to kind of mimic what we're doing in the valley, try to be proactive here. Um, so I, I still think there's some value add for having these multimodal, modal amenities as part of multifamily developments. Um, with that, everything else is pretty much status quo in, in code. I'd happy to stand for any questions on this exhibit five as well.
Council, any questions on this section? It'll just, on, on the, how many amenities, what, can you explain the expectations and amenities on the numbers?
Yeah.
And for, for, you know, just two cents on the charging stations. To me, I think I look at charging stations as a, and I guess it's all a business decision at some point in time. Do you want to reward people for doing a smart business thing? Does that really meet the intent of the character and quality of the development that we want to see? Just curious, so how many? Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, council, this is not a point system. So essentially amenities are based on the number of units. And the higher you go, the more you provide. Keep it simple that way. We have not proposed any changes like that. Um, so for your example, if anything's over 100 units, you're, it's going to be whatever planning and zoning commission wants to see in it. So if they have more, if they have, typically we see five or six amenities with our larger developments. And we, we usually tell the commission that seems to be sufficient for a development of that size, but they're more welcome to add more if they choose to.
Council, any further questions? All right. Thank you very much. Well, this is a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody sign up in advance?
Mr. Mayor, we have a few. First was Jonathan Wardle.
Okay. Well, if you'd like to come forward and you'll be recognized for three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is John Wardle. My address is 2929 West Navigator, Meridian, Idaho 83642. And I do work for Brighton. Uh, we have been involved in this process. In fact, I was going back to look through my notebook today. Uh, the first, uh, open space committee group we had was May 18th, 2020. And there were at least seven work sessions that were held as a group, as well as some other discussions. Do I have control of this, Bill? Okay, um, I did provide a letter to you today. I apologize it was late in coming. I was out of town when the planning and zoning commission met earlier, uh, in May. But I wanted to, um, generally say I, we are in support of the changes here. Uh, this was noted in the, um, in the conference of plan process of making updates to this. And I think it was, it was time well spent, needed for some changes, um, to, to make sure that we're elevating amenities in our community on a go-forward basis. And as I noted in my letter here, um, staff took a lot of time on this. Um, and I know that there were some other extenuating circumstances in the middle of that, but I want to commend staff for the time they've taken to pull together the things of the community that asked for into a document that can be discussed tonight. And perhaps, uh, continued, um, onward into the future as we look at positive things in the community. The item that I wanted to discuss specifically, and it was noted earlier, was the requirement for 50% of the open space be front on housing. Uh, and there's also another section that actually says 100%. And I, I thought the best way to do that was simply to go back and look at a community that's already established. And the community I looked at was Paramount. Uh, I made a table here in the slides showing the different areas that I evaluated. And this was pretty much all of the common areas in Paramount, um, from the clubhouse, all the way down to some small, small common areas. You will note that they all would qualify for the 50 by 100 requirement for a grassy area. But actually none of them would qualify or meet that requirement for 50% open, 52% front on. And even worse is none of them would meet the 100%. The best way to show you that was to kind of go through some aerial photos, which I, which are in your documents as well. This highlights the areas that were in Paramount that I looked at. And then I broke it down by section. Uh, this first one, the clubhouse, I said, does not qualify. And then I put a maybe, it actually could qualify under the linear open space because it does open down below. But if you take away that linear connection, it would not qualify, even though it is, um, let's see here. It's over three acres in size. The next one that would not qualify is Crosby Park. Um, it's actually 3.32 acres, the perimeter is 1800 feet. There's 753 feet of front on. So there's homes that are looking onto this across the road and all the homes around this one. And in fact, in all these common areas in Paramount have open metal fence behind. So there's complete visibility into these parks, but it wouldn't meet that criteria. And you can look through all of these, which are in the memo I sent to you today, but not a single one of these parks would qualify under this condition. And, and it, I don't think it was intended to be that way. Um, I think it was, it was something that was proposed by the consultants. And until I started digging into it, I realized, boy, if we look at Paramount, we couldn't meet any of those requirements for front on housing. Um, should front on housing be required? Absolutely. I think there is a place for it, for visibility, not just a narrow neck, uh, but expanded area on that as well. My, I guess, request to you in my email was that it be 30% front on. The city already has a code where the fencing that on all common area must be open if it can't be visible from, from the street. And so anywhere we would have these large triangle areas, it's open metal fencing anyways. These backyards are looking into them. It's highly desirable. It could be reduced, I think, maybe down to 25% if you provided another point of access. I think there's some areas in Paramount where we maybe missed that. Um, Crosby Park is a good example, large triangle. But the only way you can get to it is you have to walk all the way around unless you can sneak through your neighbor's house. And I can tell you where that is. Um, but you have to walk all the way around to get to it if you were on the other street and I'm on Fox Run. So I've got to walk around to get to it. It would be nice to have some, some additional pathway access points. And maybe that's a way to maybe reduce that front on housing. Um, in general.
John, if I could, you conclude.
I'm going to conclude right now. In general, like I said, these conditions, the, the changes are very good. We just think there needs to be modification to this front on requirement and request that it be at 30%. Stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Well, I'm going to ask a general point, just out of curiosity. Just because we haven't seen them, how would you go about effectively putting everything on front on typically? What's that? What, what does that, what would that? What would that look like in a community where you did have that? And I've just been trying to like picture it in a realistic environment.
So I have three examples. The one we did most recently was in Paramount, a cadence of Paramount. We have a couple of areas where there's common space in between these small lots, which are all alley loaded that are fronting on to a common area. It does work really well in that scenario where you have an alley and the and that front yard is that common area. We have two other communities, however, where I don't know that circling it with just a road made the most sense. One of them was Heritage Commons. You come into Heritage Commons, very large park. It's underutilized because it is surrounded completely by four roads. But it is has complete houses looking on top on to that green. But except for the occasional Memorial Day or July 4th, it's not used as much as you think it would be. And the third one is in Bainbridge. Bainbridge, we changed it up a little bit. We actually put a pool there and a playground area. It's completely surrounded by roads. Homes all look on to that one. That one's better because we had more amenities in there. But again, you do feel a little odd going into the middle of this playground area in the middle of roads. There's one case in Loxa Falls. They have a large roundabout. They actually have a couple of frisbee golf stands in there. It's not used. It's beautiful, but it's not used. And so I think, is there a time and place for it? Yes. Generally, these larger that spaces that are isolated by roads are underutilized for what we do. That's just my opinion, but those are three examples in Meridian right now of how I think we act. And those are all projects with the exception of Loxa Falls that we did.
So it's it's not more complex than it sounds. It was either you got to put a road between the homes in the park or you got an alley load to get the front door right there on the green space to accomplish it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a question for staff.
That's what I'm sure.
Thanks. Was the desire for the front yard concept or the frontage concept of the open space? Was that was that in part trying to address it being centralized? Do you think that was a part of the reason for that requirement? Was it visibility? What do you think was driving that specifically?
Mayor, members of the council, that's a good question. I I don't know where that came from, to be honest with you. I don't know. The committee members were present more than I were a lot of the times. So I tried to chime in and help out where I could give insight. But yeah, I'm not sure. I I'm not aware of any discussions around that particular. No change.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Bill, just kind of sticking on this real quick for one second. I'm just trying to find, you know, I keep going back to Renaissance Park, which, you know, everything is we have half back loaded. But it's on an arterial. We don't allow front loading on arterials. So in essence, open space in this scenario, if it's on an arterial, we're really not going to allow it to a certain extent because you can't do it unless we go change that portion of our code to turn our houses. Or collector, is that a collector? This is a collector, not an arterial, just a collector road. He doesn't allow fronting. So.
Counsel, that that is correct. We do not allow. Well, we allow front on housing on a collector. You just you're can't have your driveway there. But yeah, I think that's one of the presentations you'll see tonight from Heath and his crew. They had same thing as every city parks that way. You know, backyards backing up the city parks.
Okay. Sorry, Timmy, to get ahead of our testimony. This court.
Next is Lauren Bailey.
Again, my name is Lauren Bailey. Work address 4824 West Fairview Avenue, Boise, Idaho. Tonight, I'm here representing Devco Congress Management Group and Black Rock Homes. I'm going to start the presentation and then Heath's going to kind of finish it. One of the I don't want to waste time with this, but we had kind of assumed maybe each portion of the code that was getting updated with the four or five sections, maybe we'd have time to steep any one stuff, three minutes. Real quick here, so I hope you'll ask me some questions I can follow up. So first, I want to talk about the impacts of open space and how that increasing the open space is going to affect the community. More open space increase the cost to each lot to develop. The cost will be passed on to the buyer. Increased HOA fees and maintenance costs landscape maintenance is the single most expensive light item on an HOA's budget. So obviously, increasing open space is going to increase those homeowner dues. Decreasing property tax revenue and impact fees. Increasing open space from 10 to 15% will result in approximately a $7 million reduction in taxes per year. Increasing open space from 10 to 15% again will over the the lifetime of the remaining developer property in Meridian will be a $25 million reduction in impact fees. Other groups that are affected by that that aren't just the city include ACHD schools and in other county services. So we're proposing really a minor change here in the R8 and R15. We'd like to see 13% rather than the 15%. 13% is still going to be a 30% increase in the amount of open space in neighborhoods. So that's that's a 30% increase to those HOA dues and in 30% increase to costs. Real quick, just wanted to touch on that front run on housing. I wanted to just show you a few of the prominent parks in Meridian that would not meet the standard today. As John said, you've got Paramount, got Settlers Bridge, Champion Parks, all ringed with backyards, Woodbridge, Bear Creek, and obviously Havasu as well. So just wanted to run through a few of those. Our solution, you know, John threw out 2530, you know, I think in that range is a reasonable number. It would provide for the good visibility that the city desires, but still would allow for creative design. And and it's consistent with many of the amazing neighborhoods that are already in Meridian. I'm another item. This is this is one sentence. We like the open space quality standards, but there's one sentence in there that we think is difficult. And it's open and grassy areas that are crooked or jagged in shape, disconnected or isolated do not meet the standard.
I had flexibility. He's got another minute and minute and a half.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We feel the statement is too arbitrary and it leads to a lot of disagreements between staff, staff and applicants. We think the sentence, if it could just be deleted, it would solve a lot of problems. We don't disagree that, you know, sometimes open spaces need to be, you know, they need to be a priority. We agree with that. But we think, you know, if there's a question, it should be left up to counsel to decide if it's if it's adequate or not. Parkway driveway width. It was determined that the driveways should be always counted as 26 feet wide. We think there should be an option for a two car garage that should be 20 feet wide instead of always only allowing 26 feet to be deducted. And then lastly, we've got open water areas. We've got stormwater detention facilities. Currently, the proposal is that only 25% of that would be able to count towards open space. We feel like ACHD's requirements for drainage is that they have to drain within 24 hours. And if it's a nice green space such as Vienna Woods, should be able to count at least 20. We were proposing 75% of that should be able to count towards open space.
This last, oh, excuse me. Lauren, so I'm familiar with it being at Vienna Woods. So we're talking about that big open space, the middle of Vienna Woods is actually a storm drain.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burke, yes, that is the case. That is a recess detention facility.
Interesting. And if you notice, if you're right, it's good.
Yeah, I used to live over there. Yeah, you never know. You would.
Right now. Mr. Mayor, follow up. Would you agree that that's not the norm, Lauren?
Well, I don't, I'm not going to say the norm, but I think that good design is good design and poor design is poor design. And so I think that things can be designed well and taken care of. But to just say across the board, we're only going to count 25% throws out the opportunity for good design.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel.
So what's your solution, Lauren?
Well, I think, again, like anything, it needs to, I mean, it needs to have council's discretion. Is it is a good project or not? Is it good option or not? But I think 75% is more fair, especially when you can do something as nice as Vienna Woods. Only counting 25%, I think is, you know, pretty low, pretty low.
Sort of.
Oh, Mr. Mayor. With my experience, when I was even when I was on P and Z, I remember this was even a hot topic back then. And and I would, I would have to say, and I think that, and I never knew this, but I think even Woodbridge where I live, there's the facility, the the open space that's behind the pool is actually, and there's never any water on that on that field ever. I've never seen it. There's other spots that have it. But I think that there are some instances where, and you nailed it on the head, good design is good design. Truly, and I you and I are in 100% agreement with that. But the problem is, is I would say most storm which storm, you know, water detention facilities aren't that great of design. And when there's not water in them, they look terrible. And so and and that's the issue that we face with counsel is the select few developers who choose on their own, you know, will and choice to have the, you know, to to with their design, provide those type of storm detention facilities. And the problem with that is that we're faced with a situation where, according to our code, and in I think that we're all well aware of, you know, following code and, you know, past discussions on on applications and what and what that looks like and what it doesn't look like. But we're sort of caught, you know, that where we don't have enough teeth to make sure that we're approving good design. Does that make sense?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burke, I would agree with that. I think the problem, though, is if if you say it's only 25% can count, that means I can still do 75%. That's garbage, right? I mean, we can still have the crappy storm drainage. I would, I would argue, maybe it needs to say up to 75%. And again, leave it to council's discretion. If it's a nice facility, that's not, I agree with you. I don't want it to be a sandbox that the cats are using as a litter box. I don't like that design either. But I think there are opportunities to do things that are nice and well thought through and to just say, well, because some of them might be bad. We're not going to allow any of them. I think that's short sight.
So Lauren, what what percentage, if you were guessing of a project, is a storm drain retention facility?
You know, that that's really hard because a lot of, I mean, we try and put everything underground we can. If the soils are good, we're going to put it underground because we don't want to see it either. But there's times where that's just not an option. There's times where soils don't work or just the location just doesn't work. So that's more of an engineering challenge or call. So it's really hard to say, you know, this one or that one works better or worse. Where you run into trouble is where you get, especially you're going to start seeing south of town. You're going to get into the salt rock, which you probably don't have a lot in town in in Meridian. Haven't had in the past. And in some of those cases, you just have to do upon above ground. Can't do anything. But again, I believe there's ways to to design those properties that look still look. There's also a way to make them look terrible. But but I think to just cut it off at 25%, you're taking the opportunity away to do something creative or or innovative or nice.
Yeah, I guess where I was, where I was going to suggest, but you didn't give me a good answer was maybe we drop down the open space, but we don't count any of them. Because really, I mean, they're a function for another purpose, not a function for open space. You know, they're it's like a pond. A pond is is good when it's got water in it. When it doesn't have water in it, it's just a hole in the ground. So, you know, you know, what can you use when and why? But the same can be said for a pool. You don't use a pool year round. Use it for nine months out of the year or three months out of the year, maybe four. So I get it. There, there's various factors, but. Counsel, Mr. Secretary, do you have a question?
Mr. Mayor, I did. Thank you. Housing affordability is important. I think we know that. I think it's also important for us to listen to the residents of Meridian and hear their comments that they gave us for the Conference of Plan Process. One thing that caught my eye, I guess, if you could follow up, maybe not in this meeting, but it looks like Eagles requiring 18% open space. That's a lot more than 15%. And I recently was looking for an apartment for a family member there, and I didn't notice that their rents were dramatically different. So I guess if maybe there could be some follow up or if you have some comment on, you know, housing affordability as it relates to open space, I guess I'm just not convinced that it's a direct linear relationship.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strater. So Mr. Clark, can I just look this up and eat up Eagles code while we're sitting here? So the difference between Eagles code and Meridian's code is Eagle counts, it's 18%, but they count everything. We don't have this 50% of an arterial buffer. We don't have linear open space requirement. We don't have, you know, some of the some of the requirements that Meridian has. Meridian's tried to put rules on it. I get that. I not against that. But what Eagles done is said, well, everything counts. So all that roadway frontage counts. Anything, you know, we've got, we're doing one in Eagle right now that is up against. It's got a creek and a pathway and things and and they're allowing us to count all of that. Some of it is riparian area that really isn't usable by anyone, but it's wildlife habitat. And so we're we're counting that. So that's the difference in the two codes. I think really, if you sit down and and really figured out the actual square footage, they're probably very close to apples to apples. I think we're all thinking, well, Eagles 18, we need to be 18 and and have all these requirements. Well, then you're really going to be like 25. And so that's the point we're trying to make. I know it sounds like maybe we're we're splitting hairs, but I think, I think you're right. The rents aren't different because it's roughly the same number.
Interesting things for the insight.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, McCavan.
Lauren, early on, you touched about the open space and the cost being passed along to the homeowners association. And I'm here, you guys build pretty quality stuff that people are choosing to live. You get a lot of negative feedback about HOA dues from your from your residents. And and let me give you some context, right? So I grew up in in Old Town. We had a homeowners association and our, I think our family's HOA dues were like, Joe, like $40 a year. We had a, to call it a patch of grass is a gross overstatement. I mowed the lawn as a kid. It took me eight minutes. I got paid $8. It was the best job I ever had in terms of compensation. But inevitably, the HOA, because it wasn't usable, they just paved it over. And so to me, that's that was my first kind of context about open space until we moved to the South Side. And so help me get a flavor for what you hear from your residents. My assumption is, is that this open space, green space, it's usable, is something that people are choosing when they're looking at where they're going to live. They're they're wanting that type of space. So maybe give us a little flavor about what you hear from your residents.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilman Kavner. So we do, you know, as we're building development, we are in charge of the HOA through the how many ever years that development's going on. So we hire a management company to handle that, to be that interface and collectives, do all those things. So we do see firsthand those comments from from neighbors, homeowners. And like I said, the the number one expense, if you go look at the balance sheet, 80% of it's.
Not even close. There's not even a close second.
Nothing else. So as you add open space, that cost just goes up proportionately. It's not, I mean, I don't think it's hard to understand that that's that's the case. What we hear a lot from homeowner, especially ones coming out from out of state, is dues here are higher than what they're they were used to, which surprised me. I would have figured in California it would be much more. I think part of it's a labor issue, and I think part of it is, you know, we have to, we have to irrigate a lot more than I think some other places, especially people coming from Washington, Oregon, aren't used to irrigation. After the fact of it, they're not paying, they're not there. So I think those costs are higher. But year over year, those costs just keep going up. It's not something that's static. And this is what it's cost every year.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, any additional questions? Okay. Thank you. Heath, you'll get your own time. You're on three minutes.
I'll talk fast. It's good to see everyone. Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street, working with Lauren tonight to provide some. It's good to see everyone, Heath Clark, two fifty-one East Front Street, uh, working with Lauren tonight to provide some comments on these, on these amendments. Again, just want to compliment everybody on all the work that's been done, uh, we're hoping to be a, a productive part of the conversation to just try to get this right. So with regard to the qualified amenities, uh, we're certainly happy to see a more robust point system, we think that's a great idea. What we'd like to do is just provide a couple of quick comments on that, um, and really comes down to some of the subjective elements of the amendment. And that really comes down to the fact that it includes maximums for these points, and you have to ask yourself, what does that mean if it's a maximum? Of the, of those point values. Uh, you know, all we know right now is that points can be taken away for a number of reasons that include size, quality, ease of maintenance, durability. Integration with other amenities and year-round usability, so very similar to some of the points that the marriage is made with regard to swimming pools. So example, sports fields, they can get up to five points, but a sports field, if it doesn't integrate with other amenities, you know, if it, if it. Has to be mowed and maintained all the time, if you can't use it in the winter, seems that it would be subject to being deducted under that instance, and we'd just like to understand. How that would be, what, what would that would mean? You know, other examples would be something like, of, you know, the fitness facility. You can get four points for a five thousand square foot, or a, a maximum of four points for a fitness facility. Is, what's the difference between a five thousand or a ten thousand square foot fitness facility? Or a park and ride, if you provide forty parking spaces, is that the maximum, or is it that, if you can do the, the minimum of twenty, do you get the maximum points? You know, ultimately, we think that, that the amenities should either qualify or they should not. Um, so we're, our suggestion is, let's get rid of the maximum label, uh, let's just be a little bit clearer on, on what. Qualifies as that type of amenity and then remove the, what I've been calling the demerit system, um, from this, you know, either it qualifies or it doesn't. Uh, we think that that'll give a lot more predictability to the process, and then obviously you as council and P and Z would have the opportunity to comment on the specific package that's being suggested. Um, on a, on a similar note, you know, we were thinking about regional parks and kind of went back and forth on this. And a suggestion that we wanted to make was that perhaps with, if you're proposing a project that's near a regional park. That there would be a reduction on the amount of amenity points that are required. Still need to require at least one amenity, but a reduction of say thirty percent, we think would make sense, that would help promote housing and density near regional facilities.
Mr. Mayor.
Those.
That's what I'm burning. If I don't want to interrupt, you'll get your time back, promise.
Okay.
I'm actually going to give you some more time, so you should thank me. So if you're, because I like, we, this is a big discussion point. When, when I was on this, you know, a little bit of horse trading involved with regard to. Amenities, um, next regional parks, so if, in, in my, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, I think it actually sort of makes sense to some degree, so. What else would you do? So if we're going to allow you to have less amenities because there's a park on the street. What would you do as the developer or the app or the? The presenter in your case or whatever, to, I mean, what, what would that horse trade look like, do you think? Just, and I don't need specific, just give me some examples of what you think that looks like.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Burn, I was thinking about this this afternoon and, you know. You know, what does this look like, you know, you want to have, we want to be encouraging infill near areas that have the facilities that we've built, that we want people to use, right? So we wouldn't want to say, hey, you, six acre infill, you just get a thirty percent reduction, and now suddenly you don't have to provide any amenities. So, you know, from my perspective, you got to have at least one amenity that would be provided, and it could be anything from this list, you know, it could be, you know, the public art installation that, you know. But people are going to be coming out of what you would want, and the reason you would buy near to that regional park would be so your folks to come. Come out of your project and go use that region.
But what would, what would you give back, if you're saying we want less, but we're willing to give X?
Well, I think that when we're building near these regional facilities, one thing I think we would want to see more is more density, we'd want to see more people living near those. Near those areas, and that's one of the reasons why we would want to, to concentrate it. Um, you know, in terms of specifics, you know, I, I think we'd have to. You know, yeah, we'd be, it would be very much subjective. Yeah. Um, so with that, um, I did, uh, Lauren and I put together this chart of the specific items that we thought. It would be good for folks to have in front of them as we go forward here, and I'll just kind of summarize a few of these. Because I think I might be able to add a little bit to the prior conversation. Um, so again, with regard to the amenities, the suggestion is to remove the maximum concept and the demerit system, I think just. Does it qualify or does it not, Lynn, let us move on. And then on this same comment on the regional parks. Um, with regard to the minimum open space requirements, again, our suggestion is thirteen percent for R eight and R fifteen. Uh, on the shape of open spaces, um, you know, we're living in a post-house bill three eighty-nine world. You know, infill is going to be, it's always been important, but it's going to be even more important now. And within fill, there's going to be crazy shaped lots and crazy shaped open space, and so I think. Uh, uh, and across the board disqualification, just based on space, doesn't make sense. Um, as mentioned, we do believe the thirty percent for front on housing is appropriate.
And Heath, if you can wrap up, we've. Given you that extra minute and a half, and I think we've already gone over these, so.
Appreciate it.
Unless there's anything specific.
The last thing I would say, Mr. Mayor, then is on the, the seventy-five percent for the stormwater detention facilities. Uh, just one thing to add to that, um, you know, a couple of great examples of that are in Tuscany, uh, across the street from Sienna Elementary, there's a great one, there's one over on Tiber. But I would point you to the language of the code speaks to the, as long as the standards of eleven dash three B dash eleven are met. And those are landscape standards for stormwater, uh, and so, and they speak to it being landscaped and having trees and all that sort of thing. So I think that you, the answer to the question is actually already in your code. So with that, I'm, I'll go ahead and wrap up and call it a night.
Counsel, any questions? Which, which was the second one in Tuscany that you were referencing then?
Tiber, it's a little bit, it's a couple blocks south, next to one of the.
I think, because there's also ones that are. Just an open field, or an open piece of property that don't do anything for anybody as well. If you want across from Sienna is beautiful.
Yeah, the one, like Lauren mentioned, it's, it's all about good design and that's what we want to incentivize.
Thank you.
It's correct.
Mr. Mayor, we had no additional sign up, we do have people on, one person online and people in the room as well.
Is there anybody that'd like to provide testimony on this item, if you'd like to come forward now, or use the raise your hand feature on Zoom and we will bring you in. Or I mute you, I keep saying that. Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, I thought we were going to close the public hearing.
One, third time's a charm, right? Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Sally Reynolds, one one six six West Bacall Street. Um, lot to cover in three minutes, so I'm just going to go through bullet points and then you can ask me questions. So I was a member of the open space committee, um, I think I only missed one or two meetings if memory serves. So it was kind of a long process and I am trying to give you the best background I can with my memory, um, so I'll just go through these. Number one, I support the open space schedule as proposed with a small exception on the multifamily. I don't think that fifteen percent is too big of an ask, it was a really good compromise with everybody there. As we did a study of subdivisions that were already in existence, most of them met fifteen or exceeded fifteen percent. And that was even presentations given by some developers on the committee. Um, and most of those subdivisions were what you would call quality neighborhoods in Meridian. And so I think that fifteen percent is, as Susan Carnes would say, setting the bar high. And, um, you know, that's, that's what we're trying to do in Meridian, that's who we're trying to be when we grow up, right? I am really proud of the points amenity system that we have, really supportive of it, I think that it makes for a lot of creativity. I do agree with the letter from DCA that says, let's see how it's going in review in a year because it's something really new. And we don't know how that's going to flush out, so I say come back in a year and see how it's going. To the point of the trees, I agree with everything Mr. Mayor said, I don't think we should include verbiage that we aren't ready to employ. I don't love the idea of fee and loose schedule for trees, I think it sets, sets a dangerous precedent, and I'll just, this quick example. There's already some like horse trading in the code about, and I'll just use Winko as an example that we were talking about earlier tonight. They were supposed to be capped at sixty thousand square feet, but if you have more open space, you can go up to however many square feet, and so. We've got things in the code trading square footage for open space already, so you start adding trees to that, I just don't know how complicated that gets. Um, storm drains, if it's in the code, I think we would see much better storm drains already in Meridian. I'm in favor of counting it at twenty-five percent. If a developer comes before you and can say this is exactly what we're going to do, because that piece of land has an extremely. Large piece of the storm drains, then have them make a case for fifty percent, go through alternative compliance, I don't see any reason why not. Frontage, okay, you might be surprised, we don't know where the fifty percent frontage came from either, so that might have been a meeting that I missed as well, but. Personally, I am not supportive of the fifty percent frontage. Um, I would be supportive of decreasing it to thirty percent, I do live in Paramount where most of it, like John said, is all backed and our parks are very, very, very well used. Loxa is not, to the point of Vienna Woods, they have trunk retreats around there, I mean, it is a storm drain, but that is well used, so I think it. Some of it depends on the residents. Um, to the survey that you were asking, if my memory serves, and it was a long time ago. I think there was a survey, but I think there was less than a hundred responses, and a lot has happened in a year, so. I would say, especially with the market, I would, um, support Councilmember Stratter's idea to circle back to the public. And do it again, not as a way to guide future discussions, but just to see if what we've done meets what the public wanted. Um, just want to say a reminder, alternative compliance is there to allow for creativity and innovative development. I think there are some developers in Meridian who do that really well, and there are some that use it to skirt the UDC. And I think that this council, it can tell the difference, um, between the two, so I will leave it at that. Um, as far as the parks going next to, um, high multifamily or whatever. You know. That's one I do have a little bit of an issue with because. The developer's going to get a better price for their land at the expense of something that the city has done and maintained, right? And that projects is going to, is going to pencil better, so I don't feel like that's something that somebody should be profiting off of, I think that there could be some, as. Councilmember Burn said, horse trading, but I would hope that they could come up with some amenities to replace that open space, maybe we say, hey. It's not open grassy space because we've got a park right next door, and hey, the city is providing that for you. So what can you come back with in terms of amenities, I just got back from Seattle at two AM actually last night. And I was in two, uh, high-rise buildings where I saw one had a private movie theater for their residents. And as an amenity in a multifamily, I mean, it only had twelve seats, but you could rent it out and it was really cool. And they also had a private spa, which I don't know if we're at that point yet, but, you know, the movie theater would be really cool and, um. There's some great things with, um, DoorDash and Uber Eats and providing a refrigerator for when your groceries are dropped off, that it's in the refrigerator down in the. You know, little area, so there are really some creative things we can do with multifamily, and I would just be slow to say. Let's just say we built next to a park, so we're good. Um, three minutes are probably up, so, last one is multifamily. I would like to see. It at eighteen percent. And just because, and if not at eighteen percent, then some language, like I said, to go with some of those creative amenities. And I do think that there should be a definition in the code, right now, as Bill said, it's just open, you just say. There's multifamily and it's a subjective, how many amenities they can provide, so I think that that should be defined in code, are we saying over a hundred is two amenities, over. Five hundred is three, I'm not really sure, so. With that, I will close and stand for questions, and I, I will echo everyone else's sentiments, um, the meetings I thought were productive, we had some good discussion, I really appreciated everybody who. Sat in on them and, um, I learned a lot, and I think that, uh, everybody had some valuable contributions to it. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Sally, congrats on the hat trick. Question for you, we heard a lot tonight about increasing open space for higher density use. I haven't heard a lot of conversation about reducing the open space or some lower density use, and I don't know. That that was discussed or contemplated at the committee, and if there's any feedback or findings you could share with us.
Yeah, so personally, um. Personally, okay, R two, ten percent. I'm going to say personally, if that went down a little bit, personally, I would be okay with it. I don't think that there are residents out there who would be, and maybe that's something we can put in our survey, only because. The RD designation is kind of gone, that lower rural, um, designation for residential, the lower density residential. That designation is gone off of the comp, off of the comp plan, and I think that in the comp plan, we're saying. Preserve our fireland, preserve our heritage, and some of that feeling is the open spaces, right? So. I think that the reason the ten percent is there for the lower density. And this is just my opinion, this could be completely wrong, is because I think as residents, we're scared. That we're not going to get enough in other places, does that make any sense? That's, and that's pure conjecture on my part, that's kind of how I feel.
Appreciate you sharing that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Thanks a lot, Sally, um, I didn't quite catch the very beginning of your comments, I, I didn't want you to feel rushed. Um, if you could just go back through your comments about the table with the minimum open space requirements, do you feel like in general? Coming out of that open space committee, you feel supportive of this table, and it sounded like the multifamily you think is low. Did, are you supportive overall, how strongly do you feel about that multifamily piece?
Um, overall, the, the table that's there, I'm supportive of it, I mean, fifteen percent. I mean, in a perfect world, yeah, we would have loved to see eighteen or twenty, that's kind of what the residents were saying, and the compromise was at fifteen. So, I'm supportive at, of it as far as a compromise and, and the ones that are there. I, I feel good about, the multifamily, I, I do think it should be eighteen. And I don't know if we want to do a sliding scale with number of units, but it just feels like we're getting a lot of density in Meridian. And, um, if there's going to be so much density. You know, fifteen or eighteen percent of such a small area really doesn't even come out to be. That much when you're looking at the footprint depending, and I'm, I'm not a developer, so I can't speak to. You know, how the projects all flush out and whatnot, but I'd like to see a little bit further study on multifamily and. What is that, what are some of the applications that are being built right now, what do they have, what do they look like? And I mean, if they're all at fifteen and they look great, then great, or maybe we say it's eighteen and. You do get credit, you can get it reduced if you have some cool amenities, but that is where I'm at with multifamily, I'm not. One hundred percent supportive of that, I'd like to see that, push that direction a little bit.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burn.
Interesting thought about the multifamily portion of it. I would like to know how, when Bill, when you were doing your calculations. Were you using some type of a formula, you know, maybe for, you know, Sally's mentioned it. Tonight and others have mentioned, I was, and I was thinking it, you know, having a formula based, based upon how many units. Not necessarily like an exact amount, uh, I don't know, it's something to think about.
Yeah, mayor, council, councilmember, that, that's how we. That's how we do it now, we, we don't have a formula, but basically, it's, if you're between a certain square footage unit, you times it by X amount of square feet, and that's how you get the number. Of common open space that you provide for a multifamily development. Uh, the changes that we're talking about tonight would add that baseline amount of ten percent. In addition to that, if the, the development is over five acres. And what's, what Sally's referring to is the fact that we're putting a, a minimum cap at fifteen percent. Unless the developer chooses to do more, I think that's what her beef is with, we. I can tell you, based on a lot of the developments I've, I've tested out there, it, it's coming. We, I can tell you, based on a lot of the developments I've, I've tested out there, it, it's coming out eighteen to twenty percent for multifamily. It, it really is based on, on that formula. I'm hopeful that most of the development community or those who want to come do business in Meridian will want to provide more open space in that fifteen. But again, that's some of the discussions that I had with uh, some of the, the open space committee members. And they were comfortable with us at least saying no more than fifteen percent, or at least cap them at a minimum. If you hit all of that criteria, but they were more than willing to provide more if they had to, they just didn't. Again, each project is different. It, it's, it's hard to, to develop a code that says everything fits in this box because that, that's why we have alternative compliance. And that's what that tool is meant for. It's meant to do something innovative, not to get you out of code, but to do something that wasn't contemplated in code. And still meet like the intent of the code and the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Shout out to Susan Carnes, miss her. When I, when I was first elected, we didn't start off on the right foot, her and I. Not going to lie, I don't think she was my biggest supporter. But over the years, she became a dear friend. I hope she's, God bless her, God bless her husband, you know, I know they're, they've moved, but I miss her. She's, her discussions, that's how discussions need to be. Like you find someone you, who you completely disagree with on every level. And after a half an hour of looking someone in the eye, finding something in common and building on that. I think that's so important, and that was Susan Carden, that I miss her.
Mr. Mayor, um, Councilmember Burnt, I definitely agree, I do as well. And she had a good way of, of um, bringing everyone to a win-win and a good compromise.
Agree.
Being respectful.
Thousand percent.
Um, if I may, I had, Mr. Mayor, um, one question for Bill on that multifamily. How much bill do you think it would change? Because I know we're doing it on square footage, but number of units is really like bodies in the building, right? And that's families. So do you think that that equation would change much if we were saying, hey, numbers of units and not necessarily square footage for open space, if that makes sense?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, yeah, it, it's a good point to, to look at, but I don't think I've ever s- seen it that way. Uh, to be honest with you, but of course I haven't gone out to every code out in, in nation to see what they've done. I don't know how that would, would shake, I don't know what number to apply for a development that a hundred units versus fifty and say you should provide acre of open space. Not sure at this point.
Mr. Mayor, just a question, thank you, thank you so much. And I want a last comment if I might. As it is, I think that, I mean, the definitions that we dug into and the amount of time that we did spend going over things. I am really proud of the direction that this code is moving. I, I think there is more work to be done, but I'm really happy with the changes that, um, most of the changes that have been made so far. And I, I'd like to commend everybody who, who worked on that. And I would love, I hope that other cities do take note of what we're doing and maybe they will follow us. So thank you.
Thank you. Denise, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, if Denise agrees with that last statement, we're having a party after this council meeting.
Hello, for the third time, my name is Denise LaFever, six seven zero six North Selvia Way. And as um, some of you know, this was a really big subject for us during the comprehensive plan. And it was an area that we took exception to, Susan Karen, Sally and I, and we're really adamant about that. I'm really happy that they've spent the time to go back through and spend some time on it. I'm happy for Sally and Julie to spend time going through and sitting as residents. I do have some concerns. Um, one, I'm opposed to all the things that Devco recommended with the exception of the thirty percent front. We'll lay that out there. Um, I have one issue here that's really big for me, and that's eleven dash three G dash four B three, which is the alternative compliance. I've had issues with that on the open space and in the multifamily. I've watched so many of these council meetings and set through these and testified over a long period of time. And I can almost tell you, a lot of people come up and talk about schools, roads and open space. It's real disheartening when you spend all this time talking to individuals and they have a plan in front of them. And they think that's what they're going to get. And then alternative compliance happens. And now you have the development, um, Karma, current Carmen, Cameron, Cameron in charge of making those changes that don't align with what the people that came to the public meetings had to say. So I'm just not okay with that. I, I have bigger issues with that. Um, I also agree with what Sally said, moving from fifteen to eighteen percent. And I'm really concerned about the process that happened with multifamily. The meeting was pushed to a separate meeting in which developers and ex-mayor Tammy were involved in and excluded the full committee. Um, going on to some
What did you just say?
What's that?
I didn't hear your last statement.
During the multifamily, it got pushed to a separate meeting, okay? And during that separate meeting, that it was done with the developers and ex-mayor Tammy. It was not the full committee, it wasn't vetted with the full committee, and I take exception to that. Julie's in the audience and, and I know she doesn't want to come up, but I'd really like you guys to hear what she has to say as a member on the committee. I read her letter and I was really concerned about what she had to say. Those are a lot of the concerns that we felt when we went through the comprehensive plan. Um, the other areas that I have concern about is the restricted height change. If that's all about schools, then say that, lock it down and restrict it to all about schools. Um, my other concern is frequency of UDC changes. I think we should do that less often and not every single time we want to make a change. There's, this is a pet, pet peeve of mine, I've said it more than once. The lack of transparency for the UDC focus committee or the UDC advisory committee. I'd like to see that come as an agenda item, shown as a meeting. Um, actually, people could show up and sit through it and listen to it. It's an invisible, non-transparent meeting. The UDC is the cornerstone for how Meridian develops out. It's also the cornerstone for the codes. I just really think it needs to be transparent. And I'm still not sure of who the current list of the, the committee and who our resident, if Ann is still doing that. I know it was hit and miss when it was Susan there. Um, the last one is, is as, as some of you know, I testified about due process once before when we changed it to public meeting, cutting off at noon. Here we are today and Bill had made changes up until this afternoon. I wanted to go see if that was in fact the case. And I looked, the CC Common Space and Site Amenity Document was in fact changed on the public um, site. It was done at six one twenty-one, four forty-one and thirty-three seconds PM today. This doesn't allow your public time to really digest and see what those changes are. So if we're going to have it at noon, I think we should have it at noon all the way across and not make these last minute changes. Um, once again, if Julie doesn't come up and testify, I really urge you to go back through and read the letter that Julie put on file. I, I have a real passion that residents and the community members need to be able to have a voice here. And it's not all just about development. And yes, I love commercial development, I'll be honest. But um, I do think that people have to have a voice here. They live here and at the end of the day, they're your property taxpayers and they're foot in the bill. So I'd really like to see you guys come back with another approach and make sure that these meetings and these committees are not stacked, that the residents do have a say and that their concerns are not just pushed forward or we got to hurry along or whatever the case has been. So I really urge you, while Julie is in the audience, to bring her up and talk to her about her experience that she had on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Is there anybody else in the public that'd like to provide testimony at this time? Okay. Seeing no one that's willing to write, or wanting to provide testimony. Council, you've heard some conversations today and this is a public hearing. And I'm not exactly sure exactly, honestly, a few. From everything we've heard today, I think there's a lot, a lot in here. And quite frankly, I think there's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up my Mr. Cavanagh hat. There's a lot that the community needs to know that they don't know about. For example, the very first thing we talked about with parking and driveways. You know, I, I, I think those are some pretty big changes that have not been effectively communicated with the community and before any further action should be taken, in my opinion. Um, you know, the, that this is all about, is everything in this document, well, I shouldn't say everything. In my opinion, this is all about subjective, subjective standards about how we want to have our shared values in our community. And I think it's important that we get those shared values out in front of our community when we're going to make changes, which some of that, these can be very big changes. And that's the same point, regardless of who enforces those changes or how that goes, they are changes. So I don't know what your feelings are for about how we move forward and where or what we should do. But would love to he- hear some thoughts on appropriate next steps, since we are in an open public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Appreciate you bringing it up. It kind of leads maybe to at least my question to get the conversation started. Is there an immediate request or desire from staff to have some action on this in a certain timeframe? Recognize a lot of work has already went into this. Want to make sure that we cross the finish line the right way. Um, I just don't know if there's a, a timeline expectation for staff about this.
Mayor, council, uh, Councilman Cavanagh, it's up to you guys. I mean, really, you know, I, as Ms. LaFever brought up, you know, here I, you know, I want to make sure. All the changes that got modified from planning and zoning commission till now were things that were discussed at the hearing. It was actually going back and looking at exhibits and making sure we are getting it right because we do take it serious. I mean, when we change a code, we're changing it for the city. We're not changing it for the developer, we're not changing it for council, we're not changing it for me. We're changing it because we want to get it right. And the last thing I want to do as a staff member is get something in effect that's going to create more problems for us. And so those changes that you saw today, one was a cleaned up version. I thought with all the strikeout underlying changes, it might get confusing to read through those documents because there is so, there are so many edits to, to read over. And I thought it might be something you guys wanted to look at. So I just went ahead and sent that to the clerk at the end of the day to make sure you had that as part of the record. But overall, again, the, the, the purview is yours. If you think these are things that you want further addressed and further vetting and shared with the community, then absolutely continue it out. If you feel like you have enough information to make a decision tonight, give me some clear direction. I'll make the edits happen, coordinate with legal and we'll get the ordinance approved and passed within a couple of weeks. I'm flexible either way for you. I just, I just know this was important, um, not only to us. We've, we started this process in the fall, we are here in the spring, early summer here, and we don't have resolution to it. And I think that's, that's where staff wants to be. We want a resolution, either we, we like what we have or we pause and get it right until we have the right information for you, where you feel comfortable with the changes.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
So to that point, you know, you, you read the information that staff presents and having this presentation from council or from, from staff, feedback from, from the public, to kind of take that all into without maybe having to make a decision tonight to something I'd be supportive of. And I appreciate with the last round, having the opportunity, after all, this has been presented to go and meet with staff and kind of talk through and help me kind of see where staff is coming from and weigh that against the public was helpful. So selfishly, I'd like to repeat that process again. Um, and have a little time to, to digest and to the mayor's point to allow uh, maybe a little bit greater request from the public if they've got feedback on any of this, to invite them back and share that information with us. Um, it's a small crowd tonight. Uh, perhaps there'll be more people that feel as strongly as I do about parking trailers or boats and driveways or open space. And they had the opportunity to come back and share that.
And really, for, for me, where I look at, I look at this in two very different buckets. We have the bucket that can impact everybody in this city tomorrow if it's passed. And we have the bucket that's going to impact how we move forward and make decisions as we continue to grow and develop. And yes, that can impact our community feel and character, but it's not going to impact how we, everybody, the day it's passed. You know, what we decide for ten, twelve, fifteen, eighteen percent open space has no bearing on the person living in Tuscany today, tomorrow, the next day. So that's really where I would want to make sure we at least, does a community understand the changes that we're proposing? They're gonna, to me, it's like a law change. I mean, that's what, what it is. I mean, and we need to make sure that they're aware of law changes and how they impact them versus open space is a little different, that's a touch point, that's, I don't, how, do we feel like we got this right? Not are you prepared for this change to your community character tomorrow? So, two cents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, it feels, feels like the parking one especially is kind of like that third rail. I think that we, we maybe want to highlight or bubble that out there for the community to get feedback specifically. But I, I just think with all these changes, I'd love to see something. And it's tough to simplify all these changes, but I'd love to see something maybe come out like just a summary of what we're considering and some type of a town hall format or some way to connect back. Um, maybe publicize it in a way that it's not the full comprehensive plan. Um, we don't have to have like ten different meetings throughout Meridian, but I'd love to have this highlighted a little more for people so we get a little more feedback from the community personally. Uh, and I think there's been a lot of good exchange of information here. And it would be good to chew on it a bit and, and take a few more swings at it personally.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I'm pretty close. Uh, there's some concerns and some things I just want to wrap my arms around just a little bit more, go over my notes. Um, and also, uh, I, I'd like to look at Julie's email. I skimmed through it, I, I didn't, I didn't read it as closely as I should have. So I want to go back and read Julie's email as well, I think she deserves that. But most importantly, this is, I think we're all in agreement, this is a really important. I mean, this is a, this is finality to many months of preparation and deliberation and time and effort. Not only made by staff and, but, but in, but are, you know, uh, our friends, the development community, but citizens who have volunteered their time and to uh, give their opinion. And, and quite frankly, we have two uh, council members that are absent tonight that would bring fantastic perspective as well. So uh, for that, I think it makes a lot of sense to continue this um, episode.
So uh, Mr. Mary, since this is not land use, let's pretend like we continued this for a month and found a way to go out and get additional community feedback in some fashion. What limitations, if any, are there in seeking feedback, having dialogue through a town hall or through a survey on next door or anything?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, great question. And again, because this is a legislative action, um, it, it definitely needs to be funneled into the public record somewhere. So whether it's a public hearing or a public meeting, if there's notes kept, minutes kept, those types of things, they probably should make it into the public record. But feedback from your community members, feedback at the grocery store, feedback at all of those things are certainly welcomed. You're allowed to do that. I mean, again, when the council's making a decision and you're going to make a decision on what Joe told you at the grocery store, then please tell us what Joe told you at the grocery store. So we're at least clear where you're getting your information from. But it is, it is, you are welcome to accept whatever information, however you want to get it. So a survey's fine, a town hall meeting is fine, a coffee with the mayor is fine, whatever method to get public feedback. I always encourage them, and please write it in an email and send it to us. We'd like to have it just for the record so people can see, but they're not limited to that. They don't have to only do it that way.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Agree with all the comments. I didn't quite frankly even contemplate deciding tonight, knowing that we're going to get Agree with all the comments. I didn't quite frankly even contemplate deciding tonight, knowing that we're going to get some input from the public and community and whoever happened to show up. And there's just a lot to consider and think about. So if it's a next date at least for us to consider, it's a continued public hearing on this to a date certain. And then mayor's office provides an outreach to the community through social media at least. And we'll have a town hall or a conference with mayor or something more robust. Very least, you've got some ability to do some.
But, Mr. Mayor, one thing we serve is the council, one thing the council's done in the past, when you have this very large project like this, is to break it into chunks. So that way, we spent about two and a half hours on, on all of it tonight. But you know, is it more beneficial to all of you to have a focused discussion or a focused survey or a focused concentrated period to then talk about just the open space? Or the other changes that affect the code and code edits and not cut it? Because again, like some of the people said, if you get three to four minutes, but you're trying to talk about stuff that was presented for an hour, that's pretty challenging and they're all varied greatly. So that might be a way to help all of you get the information in pieces that are more digestible to then make a decision in a direction at some point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
So maybe we start July 6th and then we do it again, July 13th and break it up half and half. I think that gives an opportunity for outreach, whatever that looks like to you, Mr. Mayor, in your office. And it gives us an opportunity to break it up. So we're not, you know, I mean, I know we all love talking about UDC code. But maybe, you know, separating it, separating it in two different nights would be, I think what Bill said makes sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Mary pointed out that it may be a little challenging coming off of a, a holiday week, that first week. So maybe staggered it from what the, maybe the 10th, the 23rd or something along those lines. You, staff, I think can, I guess, Mr. Mary, do we, do we need to continue it to a specific date certain? Or can we say we're going to continue it and mayor and council president can determine appropriate date in the future?
Uh, Mr. Member of the council, because it is legislative, if it is just subjective agenda setting, so you can set it. I, I just recognize that sometimes the Tuesday immediately after a three day weekend is a challenge both for staff and the public.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clerk.
Just want to put out, you do have a special meeting on the 29th that you've scheduled for one application that was continued. And then July 13th, you have two council reviews now of a land use project, planning and zoning approved. So that might be a, a long evening on the 13th.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
What does the six look like, Chris?
At this time, there's no notices we put out. We've not hit that deadline yet. So it's possible something could be coming forward from planning, but right now it's.
Yeah, Mr. Med, I, I, I don't, I, I, I'm okay with just continuing it to the sixth. And if we need to, if we need more time after the sixth, we'll do it again.
Yeah. And if it's, we can only accommodate or all what, you know, get direction on one or two items on the six. We can see where we are based upon the conversations we've had at that point in time. With that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we continue item 15 to July 6th.
Have a motion second to continue item 15 through July 6th in the discussion on the motion. If not, I'll very significantly by saying I oppose nay. The ayes have it. The item is continued. Thank you very much for those came and speak, speaking this evening.
Groupies in the house.
That's right. Council, anything on the future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn the meeting. I'm favor signified by saying I. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. We're adjourned.